Testing, testing. Ladies and gentlemen, please excuse tonight, I will have to hit my hand on the table. I do not have the gravel, so I hope I do not offend anyone here because I'm using my hand and not the gravel. Thank you. This meeting is called to order. The special meeting of the Board of Directors, Thursday, October 13, 2022. Please stand to salute the flag in a moment of silence. Mr. Butler, will we have a roll call, please?
Yes, your name, Madam President. Mrs. Abney?
Present.
Ms. Perry?
Present.
Ms. Monroe?
Present.
Mrs. Peter Coe, excused. Ms. Woodfolk?
Present.
Mrs. Washington?
Present.
Mr. Fowler, excused. Ms. Crowley?
Present.
Present.
Ms. Harris Johnson?
Present.
Dr. Wynder?
Present.
Mr. DiOrio?
Present.
Mr. Butler? Present.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. My comments tonight are, good evening, everyone. The Board of School Directors has scheduled this special meeting for the purpose of discussing Academy Park High School school concern. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion counts. New business, the discussion is regarding Academy Park High School concerns. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Madam President. As Board Secretary, I want to take a moment to state what the role of the administrative staff will be this evening. The Board of Directors called this special meeting to address concerns that have been brought to their attention in regard to Academy Park High School. Tonight's meeting is a discussion between the Southeast Delco School Board of Directors and the community. The administrative staff is charged with the role of being active listeners, and we will be taking copious notes. At this time, I'd like to hand the meeting over to Ms. Monroe Wisset.
Good morning, everyone. At this time, I would like to know if anybody has any public comments on this discussion. Margaret Rogers Bing.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. My concerns were, my name is Margaret Rogers Bing of Pine Street in Glen Olden. My concerns were there were no clear book bags given out despite the robo-call that went out right before school started. Upon entering the buildings in the morning, when bags are checked, students go to the side of, students go to the side if their bag is searched, and the bag is given to the student, and they go their way into the building instead of being rechecked through the machines. Why are they not researched to see if they have something on their person? Students do not have enough time to eat breakfast because of the morning search after the long length of time that it takes to get into the building. There are 18 vacancies at Academy Park, which I understand there are shortage, staffing shortages all over, so I took the liberty to look at other high schools in our area. Pembroke High School does not have any vacancies. Interboro High School has 15 vacancies, 14 of which are just for clubs and one for a classroom. Ridley High School only has two vacancies, and Chester High School has six. There have been 24 vacancies, 24 teachers that have left since the new principal came. And my children told me they were told to take mandatory clubs, but the bigger issue is not just getting them to do clubs, there's just a bigger issue to get the kids to buy into what's going on in school before we can get them to buy into the clubs. On top of, there doesn't seem to be enough staff to even run the clubs. So those were some of the issues that I have, and as an employee, my personal issue right now is that the district needs a full-time plumber. I know my school DTS has many plumbing issues that the current maintenance staff cannot keep up with, and we have not had a full-time plumber in months, if not a year or more. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Are there any more public comments?
Good evening, Raquel Irons, Burnside Avenue, Sharon Hill. I believe most people know me in here from just coming off the Board. One thing I did want to say was, the last school board meeting, we discussed branding, a new branding for this district, and I want to say, with a new branding or branding for anything, we have come to trust. That is why people buy certain things, because brand, they trust the brand. Me being here all of these years, if you know me, you know I have cleaned the floors in the district. I have worked for this district and sat on the Board for this district. I still have my pulse on the district because with my current job, I'm in this building certain times a week to service the children, service some of my children. Having said that, I used to love coming here every day. It's to the point, I don't even want to come into this building, and that's sad and hurtful for Aunt Rock. Aunt Rock loves Academy Park. I love the children of my district. I live, I've been in this district all my life. To come inside this building and to be downstairs, especially at lunchtime, the only thing I can compare lunchtime to is Times Square, when it's, when it's New Year's Eve, or maybe the boardwalk in Wildwood. It is crazy. I won't say that I'm scared, because I'm not scared to be in here, but I can see why other people may feel that way. I encourage everyone on the Board to come and see what it's like being in this building. I come in this building, and the secretaries don't even look happy anymore. You see the distress on their faces every day. We are too small of a district to have this many problems, this many issues. And we talk about branding and trust, but I don't trust that anything will get done. I think I'll trust that we have meetings to talk about meetings, to talk about what we're going to do. I think that the community is tired. I know I'm tired, and I never thought I would get tired. I'm in all school districts in the building, and it's sad, it's not sad, but I could tell you my favorite building to go to all time, every month, is Chester High. Chester High is my favorite building to go into, because when I come through that building, I know the security, they are moving those kids out, locking doors, and I just have a good time, I just have a good time there, and I just think it's sad when I'd rather be there than in my own district. Thank you.
Much. Are there any other comments? Public comments? Does anybody in the audience need to speak and didn't fill out a card? At this time, I'll take comments from the Board members.
Ms. Monroe Wisset, I do have a comment. Madam floor. So I, I'm definitely hearing what Mrs. Bing said, as well as Ms. Irons, and I'm very, very curious, and I know this is to hear from the public and not from admin, but I went back and I reviewed when we had the new principal come to a board meeting and questions that the public had sent in were read to him, and I was looking at some of the goals that he spoke of, and I have a high schooler here, and I could say as a high school parent, I don't see many steps towards those goals, so I was wondering if it would be possible to hear from the principal about what type of changes he's making to get Academy Park under control, and if he thinks he's made any improvements since he started here last year.
Principal Vogt?
Point of reference, I had made a statement at the beginning that the administration would be taking copious notes. So our intent is to respond to all of the concerns in writing. There is a certain level of investigation and fact-finding that we have to do, and I would not want to take that, that risk in answering the question without doing that first. So, but we're more than happy to answer all the questions, that's the intent.
Ms. Perry, is that all?
I mean, I think everything else that I'd want to say is probably public knowledge at this time. I am very concerned about the number of fights that occur at the high school. Like I said, I do have a student that attends here. He is a gifted student who is completely distracted this year. He has had to witness videos online of his own friends being jumped, and I just really do not understand why it's not a situation where all hands are on deck to get this under control. I mean, the principal is still just one person, we have three assistant principals, but in my opinion, I feel like the students and the staff here at Academy Park do not feel supported and do not feel in a situation where they can speak out about concerns that they have, and that's why I feel that this room is as quiet as it is tonight, because they do not feel comfortable because of fear of retaliation if they speak up about the issues that they're having in their own school that they've worked at for years and loved being here, and now they're just dragging through every single day. My son has been in Southeast Delco since kindergarten. He has loved every year at Southeast Delco, except for his two at Academy Park.
Is that all, Ms. Perry?
Yes, that's all.
Any other Board members?
Yes, I want to piggyback off of what-
Ms. Woodfolk?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Cynthia Woodfolk. Of what Ms. Perry said. In regards to the principal not saying anything, how are the Board is supposed to know what the principal needs to take control over Academy Park?
To talk about the position without a name or with a name, that would have to be an executive session item that is not permissible in assumption.
Okay. Well, I-
We can, we can get to that, we can answer those questions.
Right.
But it depends on how specific you're going to be and what risks are involved with having that discussion in assumption.
So- Ms. Woodfolk?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me one second, I just have a question. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. DiOrio?
Yes.
Is it possible that the, if the principal has any needs that he needs to improve the environment of the building, can he speak on that and not have any restrictions?
You mean this evening?
Yes.
That's up to the Board and the administration to make that determination. I mean, there's no prohibition and there's no rule, policy, one way or the other, it's really up to the Board as to how this session is being conducted.
Okay, and one more question, so that we're all clear. So if a Board member asked a question like Ms. Woodfolk just asked, what is the, what does the principal need in order to support a better learning, a better environment in Academy Park, will he be able to answer that question without any legal ramifications or anything of that nature?
Again, if that's, if that's the wishes of the administration and the Board, certainly there's no prohibition in this meeting, as long as I would suggest that students' names not be, not be given and the usual confidentiality provided, but no, I mean, it's really up to the Board as to how they want to conduct this session.
Okay, and our last question, I promise you. Is the principal or principals allowed to approach the podium? And answer the question, or are they going to just answer it, or they can answer it from the chair?
Yeah, Ms. Wood, as you well know, as the Board knows, we've had members of the administration approach the podium at public meetings before, so there's no prohibition against that.
Thank you, Mr. DiOrio. Ms. Woodfolk, I apologize for interrupting you, you may continue.
Okay, so since we can have Mr. Vogt at the podium-
Yes. Ms. Woodfolk?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
There be no names, please use the title or position.
My apology.
Thank you very much, Ms. Woodfolk.
Yes, my apology. I would like to have the principal of the Academy Park at the podium, please.
What is your question, ma'am? Ms. Woodfolk, what is your question?
Yes. I would like to ask the principal, what is it that he needs in order for him to take control over Academy Park?
Thank you for that question. Good evening. When I interviewed back in June of 21, and it was three rounds of interviews, one of the information that I shared with the Board and I think the Board members that were present is that in 2018, so it was prior to the pandemic, in 2018, Academy Park was listed as a top 25 school for violence, and that was all buildings in the state of Pennsylvania. So that includes all elementary schools, all middle schools, and all high schools across the state of Pennsylvania. Academy Park was in the top 25. That had to do with police involvement, and it was because of the violence that was taking place, specifically fighting. I shared that during my interview in coming in. In December of 20, of 21, roughly five months into the position, my administrative team, myself, did meet with, yes, with, with admin from ESC, and we made the request at that time for four additional security officers. In a normal situation, we would be able to put teachers in hallways to do supervision, but we had a teacher shortage last year, and we continue with a teacher shortage even worse this year. So teachers are not available for those duties because they are covering classes. So the quest, the request was made in December of 21, was actually the evening of a board meeting. The reason I know that is an hour after that request, there was a shooting, and one of our senior students was shot, and I missed the board meeting because I was at the hospital visiting that student. At that meeting, when I requested four additional security guards, I was told that I was the principal, I took the job knowing what it was, and to do what I could with what I had, and that's what we have done. This year complicates it even more, because we have a number of teaching positions that have not been filled. So we have teachers doing double duty, triple duty, and even though they're being compensated to do that, is extremely difficult on the teaching staff, but also on this administrative So to start with, I am requesting tonight four additional full-time security guards. And that evaluation is backed up because the first week of the new Director of Public Safety's position, he approached me in the cafeteria because I set up the cafeteria this morning, excuse me, the beginning of this year. The good news is that we have many of our students coming back, not just from cyber school, but coming to school regularly this year. Attendance is up. The disadvantage is, with four lunches, we roughly have between 275 and 300 students at any given time in the cafeteria. The cafeteria is undersized for that number of students. But the Director of Public Safety, new Director of Public Safety, approached me and said to me, you need four more security guards. And I was happy to see that a gentleman who has been a police officer, who's very knowledgeable about coverage and security, came to the same conclusion that I did in December of 21. We need additional security on the floor to help move our students. When a situation arises, our security responds, but in holding those students, that security then is off the floor. And we have three floors here, two of those floors have two wings. The Board is probably unaware, the public is probably unaware, we did not publicly say this because we didn't want to get out with our, with our students. We started off the year with 35 of our cameras out. The update that I'm told now, there was a software change, cameras were supposed to be up, I was recently informed that now we have to switch cameras. That compromises the safety that we have, and we've taken very positive steps through the prior Director of Public Safety with the new Evolve system, with the window armor in all the classroom doors, and for whatever reason, when this building was built in 82, but for decades afterwards, last year, 18 exterior doors were not alarmed, they are Unfortunately, I think some of those things happened because of events, unfortunate events that happened last year. That puts us in a situation of being reactive rather than proactive. So it starts with our four security guards. Additionally, our students have a great number of needs beyond academics. We have three guidance counselors for 1,200 students. We need additional counseling support for our students. When I came in, I asked for two things when I took the job. One was another full-time custodian. We have one full-time custodian for this building. That was somewhat rectified by the hiring of someone else, but when that gets pulled, that gentleman gets pulled for other tasks in other buildings, we are back to one custodian for the entire building. And during lunches from 10:39 to 12:45, that custodian is in the cafeteria. So when a student gets sick in the classroom, when there's a spill in the hallway, when a toilet backs up, now we have additional problems. We need additional support, and from what I have been told in years past, there were two full-time custodians here. I was told one passed and was never replaced. I also asked for an in-school suspension monitor. Some of you, if you have children that went through here, the ISS room used to be in room 320, and the students, when I got here and I met with them, called it the hole. That was offensive to me. We want to hold students accountable, but in no way do we want students to relate in-school suspension with a jail term. So I immediately changed that. We, we have another room that we use, it's more of a classroom setting, it's not as large, we can only have eight to 10 students there. The difficulty that we have, and we had it last year, is that teachers cover ISS. Unfortunately, we prioritize covering classes, so many times our ISS is canceled for the day, so then we are not able to hold students accountable for their behavior. And then you might say, well, then the only other option is out-of-school suspension. And I think all of you know how I feel about that. I want our students here. I don't want our students out of school suspension. That's an extreme for extreme behavior. I want them here. But my vision for in-school suspension was to change where the teacher was not the monitor, but the teacher was the academic support, and we rotate the core subject areas through ISS, so that social studies, science, math, and English teachers would rotate through the day and serve as supports, not monitoring those students. Additionally, we run into difficulty because as the teachers change their schedule and go and do the rotation, the ISS room for a period is unsupervised, which is dangerous to, in any classroom, have students unsupervised. In my experience working in the school district of Lancaster, we had a ISS monitor specifically trained to work with students that got themselves in time-to-time trouble, but could motivate those students to continue to work, and our teachers rotated through those content core levels to, again, support them academically, so while holding them accountable, they don't fall further behind academically. I never received that support, not the custodian, not the ISS monitor. With regards to the number of teacher openings, and it was shared with a parent tonight, I am very, very aware of how many openings are in our building, in our district, in comparison to other districts. But I am just the high school principal. We have interviewed all year long, this administrative team, spent the majority of our time this summer interviewing to fill positions. We continue to interview for positions. There are many discussions I know going on at the district office level, probably amongst the school board. I have shared some suggestions that I have, that have worked successfully in districts I've worked on, but again, my focus is this building, and we are making do with the resources that we have to the best of our ability. I do understand the frustration from teachers, and we are very, very thankful. I'm not naming obviously names tonight, but there are teachers that are giving up their prep, they're giving up their duty to be able to teach additional courses, cover teachers that have left, and they are doing an outstanding job. But I also know that that is not sustainable. This administrative team and one of our new administrators that came on and comes from a charter school in Philadelphia, so very similar situation, has said, how do you ever get anything done? How do you get into classrooms to support teachers? How do you meet with students for discipline? And, and we subscribe to restorative practices here, so it's not a matter of the student coming in the office and spending five minutes giving them detention, suspension, and sending them on their way. We walk them through their behaviors so they have better choices the next time they find themselves in that situation. Ladies and gentlemen, that takes time. But I can tell you, as far as administrative team and the teachers here, we are working double duties. In terms of being available, I, since I arrived here, I have an open-door policy. Students, including students of Board members, are in my office, do make suggestions. There are things that are going on with regards to homecoming. Unfortunately, last year because of COVID, there's many things that we could- There are things that are going on with regards to homecoming. Unfortunately, last year because of COVID, there's many things that we could not do. This year, we are doing those things. One this week is, is the homecoming celebration. Not just with our school, but the combination of bringing back the elementary schools. Assemblies this year, a mentoring program for our freshman students that could need and would benefit from support from our seniors. But I'm reminded what the superintendent told me a month into the job, two months into the job. This change that needs to take place is not going to take place overnight. And it's not going to happen because of one person, nine board members, three assistant principals. It takes us all. Probably a long-winded answer to your question, but.
Thank you. Excuse me, um, I have a com- I'm sorry, it's not a question. I just wanted to comment.
I don't know who's speaking right now. Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, um, can you please see at the podium? Um, Ms. Washington?
Yes.
One second. You're done, Ms. Woodfolk?
Well, I just, I, I, I did have one question. Can you tell me during the course of your day, how often do you have fights, drama, uh, that goes on within the school?
We're, we're probably averaging a fight a day.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Last time we spoke with admin, they mentioned that, uh, ten percent of Academy Park High School students are, um, have been suspended three times or more. Can you confirm that it's about of the twelve hundred students, it may be a hundred students that are consistently having, uh, problems with violence at Academy Park? Is that correct?
And I would tell you, probably in every high school, based on my experience, it's roughly ten percent of the population where we spend ninety percent of our time.
Okay. Of the ten percent of the students who have, um, had consistent problems with behavior, what percentage of those students have been offered interventions?
But they, and, and again, that's a, that's an excellent question. They are all, uh, provided interventions with regards to whether it's administrative interventions. Sometimes it's guidance counselors intervening. Sometimes the students are sapped, so they have additional supports from our, our student assistance, um, team. Um, other times, it's outside services as well, that we contact with parents and provide them, um, with information. Sometimes that therapy can take place here in school from an outside agency.
Okay. Um, I have a follow-up question. Of the, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Washington. You can, you can pick up.
Um, my question, I don't have a question for Ms. DeBoe. I just wanted to make a comment as a whole, so you can continue.
Oh, okay. I, I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt you, Ms. Washington. Um, in terms of policy change regarding, uh, suspensions and expulsions, of the ten percent of students who are consistently violent or perpetuating violence at Academy Park, we have students, and this is a question, um, who have been, let's say, suspended three times or more. Um, I'm curious, uh, what the cutoff is, or if that's something the board needs to decide, that, um, at, let's say, pre-suspension and interventions have been provided for, um, the student, that there is, um, a conversation about expulsion. That, that's what I'm, I'm curious about.
Right. It's, it's usually expulsion. And again, I told my wife I would try to stay in my lane tonight. As you know, we have, um, we have an all-ed program. In my opinion, that all-ed program needs to be revamped. Right now, if a student commits a suspendable offense and multiple suspendable offense, it's not usually expulsion. That would be for drugs or weapons. But to the point where it's suspension after suspension, the behavior doesn't change, then the conversation turns to, and usually there's a behavior contract involved, and the student then, uh, violates the behavior contract. Then the conversation shifts with parents to alternative ed. However, currently, when a student is referred to alternative education, if the parents decline that placement, those parents are then given the option to put their child in our cyber program. Now let's think about that for a second. The number of hours that we're spending, because again, all-ed is very serious, so it's either serious behavior or multiple behaviors. And now instead of all-ed, smaller group setting, academic in nature, teachers there, guidance counselor there, they are given the option to go to cyber, which many of them choose. Are we doing right by the student by giving that choice? And I look at the business manager, and I understand why the choice is given. Because we don't want to lose that student if the parents send them to Agora or somewhere else. However, it is well-known and the students know in this building that an all-ed placement doesn't necessarily stick. That they can choose to go to cyber. And I would tell you, and I think the board knows, when we were closed, before I got here, when we were closed for COVID, even our best of students were not successful with cyber. That is very, very difficult. So would our all-ed students benefit from that? That choice that they're given? I do not believe so. Additionally, we have a full complement of teachers over there, as well as a guidance counselor. I can't tell you exactly how many students are there right now, but it's probably in the mid-to-high single digits. My understanding in talking with a previous assistant principal who headed that program at some point in her career is that there would be upwards of forty to sixty students in there. That is a resource and should be used as a resource. However, I have also shared in the past, even though again, I am the Academy Park principal, that that alternative ed program requires therapeutic support. It does not exist there. There is no therapeutic support at the alternative ed program. Now I don't want to put the blame on the alternative ed program. However, a sweep of gang members that took place a year and a half ago here, eight of those students, uh, eight, eight of those gang members that were swept up had gone to our alternative ed program. As an educator, I wonder, and this predates many of the board members here, myself, the superintendent, but if the alternative ed program had therapeutic support with some of those eight former students chose a different course. But that is in the past. How can we best support the students over there? When I came here, originally when a student would go to all-ed, they would disappear, either a semester or a whole year. I do not believe that. I want students here. So I changed that last year to a forty-five-day placement. If they do what they need to do over there, academically, behaviorally, they are welcome to come back here. One student in particular, I sent there and back and forth three different times because I will not give up on students. But again, we get back to resources.
How much therapeutic support do they need?
I would not be the person, I would not be the person to answer that. Uh, one would start, one would be great because right now there is none.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adney. Are there any other board member comments?
Uh, yes. Um, hi, I'm Amy Washington. Um, uh, just want to say I thank everyone for coming out this evening, um, and those that spoke. It takes, uh, a lot of courage to get up here and speak about this issue and your concerns. Um, I just want to piggyback off of principal, and, um, I believe that there is no one answer. There is n- not one job, one person. Um, if we look around in this room right now, the community is not here. Um, and I'm saddened by that because, um, nothing works unless we go full circle. And we have a good number, a good amount of staff, um, most of our board is here, and, um, we have things that need to be solved. And I think our community needs to be here. We have Sharon Hill, we have Academy Park, Delcroft, Darby Township Kindergarten Center, I, Harris Schools, six schools, and less than twenty-five parents that I see. The principal, you know, he came, um, he came up, he spoke, he, he answered questions. Um, he's one person. There are, how many, twelve hundred children in this building? Twelve hundred children in this building and less than thirty parents in this audience. I'm just personally, we can't get anywhere when I haven't parents in these seats showing the care and concern for their most precious beings that they own. This is their children. We're here. I don't have kids in high school. I'm here. Something has to be done. I appreciate the staff and the admin, people that took their time out to come out, our board, but this is not enough. This probably won't be the last meeting. I'm sorry, Mr.? Mr. Weber?
Um, Ms. Washington, I'm sorry. Do you have another comment?
I thought Mr. Weber was reading.
Yeah, but they have to fill out a card, so I just told them to go with a card.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. That was, that was my, my comment. But again, thank you all for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Washington. Are there any other board members? Ms. Adney, and then we have some comment cards.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, thank you, Ms. Washington. I, I think there may be some solutions in the wo- in the room though, so we want to acknowledge those of you who are here and to appreciate you and to, um, encourage you to come to the mic, right? If you have some thoughts, concerns, or ideas, uh, this is your time to share them with us, right? Um, because we're not in the building every day, so we need to hear from you. Thank you.
Um, you have some comments?
Hello, my name is Michelle Giangilio. I'm a teacher in the alternative ed program. I teach science. And I want to thank Mr. Vogt for supporting us. Oh, yes, the principal for supporting us. And, uh, yes, he is, and I, there is one student who has been in and out of our program three times, and he's the reason he keeps coming back. And that child is coming back on Halloween to this school, and he is so excited to be coming back. So this is a program that's working. But some of the things we do not have, we do not have a math teacher, a certified math teacher. We have a person, but we do not have a certified math teacher at this time. We do not have a guidance counselor. Our guidance counselor went off to have a baby, which was wonderful, but we have not had a guidance counselor, and our children miss her. They need her. There were times they would go down to her office, "I need to see her." And they don't have her anymore. That's a problem. Okay? So not even the extra support, but just the support they were used to is gone. We're supposed to have a seventh and eighth grade teacher. We do not. There is a person who's been hired for that position, but they have not been able to be put in that position as of yet. We have a person who was supposed to be a cyber teacher for the middle school children, has been hired, has not been put into that position yet, has not been in our building. So as the high school is understaffed, we are also understaffed. And we need a security person also. We had an issue today with a fight, and we had to call the police. All right? We, we need staff also. It's just, it's difficult to do that without the support. Does anybody have a question for me? Okay. Thank you.
Michelle McGowan?
Hi, Michelle McGowan, four twenty-one Clifton Avenue, Sharon Hill. I just simply wanted to say, we have a son who is coming to the high school next year. He's thirteen. He's incredibly quiet and incredibly shy. And I am terrified. From the things that I've been hearing, it's extremely concerning. But there's another reason why I'm kind of terrified. There's no pride in Academy Park. There's no pride in the community. The reason these seats are empty, nobody cares anymore. There doesn't seem to be caring from the admin, parents. There is, no one is working together. There's nothing for the kids to look forward to. They're coming to school basically to do their work and go home. There is nothing. This whole building should be completely lit up for homecoming. It's Homecoming Week. Why on earth do I not see decorations everywhere? Where is the Spirit Week? What is going on? You guys have this place to where you got, I know that he was mentioning that he doesn't like the sound of it being like a prison. Dude, it's straight up prison. There's nothing to look forward to. Nothing. We have activities and wonderful things, and yes, you may have your club here and you have this there, but do you realize if you have this club, and then you have this club, and you have this club, you know what you still don't have? Unity. You can have a million clubs doing their own thing. There's nothing for anyone to do that's together. We're worrying about how to handle the bad kids. Obviously, that's going to be something that you need to do. But you know how you handle bad kids? Show them something that they want to be a part of. Give them something that they actually would want to be here for. If there's nothing to be here for, then yeah, you're right. I would be pissed off and be like, "I can do whatever I want because nothing matters anyway." Give them something. You've got parents here who are dedicated. The, I've, I've seen, uh, most of these parents' faces at various different meetings. You clearly have parents that are concerned and, and here to do something. Create a task force. We're here. We're vocal. We're not afraid to help. Utilize us more. Utilize the community more. Utilize these businesses that are all around. Get something going. Get a conversation going. Get anything happening. And then you will start to see the behavior coming down because it's going to start to bring out those parents that are like, "I didn't want to say anything because I didn't know what to do, but I actually have this talent here and I can actually help and do this." "Oh, I'm, I'm, I know my kid is being bad and I'm, I don't, I need some help." And I can actually speak up and say, "I need some help" because I'm not afraid to anymore. I don't feel shunned. And, and the only time I'm hearing from my school district is when my kid is acting up. That's what I'm saying. You need to bring the pride back to Southeast Delco. If that, if you want us to get to where we're not having fights every day, we already started addressing things. Food. We talked about how the terrible the food was, and when you're angry and hungry, those two things don't mix, and you will pop right off and have an incident. So you guys are working on the food. So congratulations. I'm really glad to hear that. That's a wonderful step. Keep going. You can't just go, "Oh, we did it. We're done." There's more to go, a lot more to go. The lunchroom, if the lunchroom is like the Wild West, then clearly it means they're not occupied. Find something to do. Create activities to do during lunchtime so that people will actually pay attention. It's maybe, I don't care, play music videos, do whatever you gotta do. Find a way to keep them occupied so that they don't have a chance. But that's all I wanted to say.
Raymond K. from Folco?
Raymond K. from Falcroft.
Good evening, Ray Krathheim, Falcroft. I have two children in high school, one's a senior, one's a junior. I appreciate the board having the meeting tonight. Just wanted to address that. I knew there were problems. My daughter's talking about the cafeteria quite often. I knew there were fights beginning of the year. I didn't know it was to this magnitude of an issue. So I appreciate the board having the meeting tonight. I would like to comment that somebody mentioned about, "There's nobody here." This was a quick turn meeting. I found out about it before work on Facebook. There were no robo calls, no emails, nothing to my knowledge. So how do you expect the community to be involved when the majority of them don't know that there's a meeting to come to? So, but again, I appreciate the insight that the principal and other parents have spoken up. I would like to ask the board, um, you know, do you get metrics on a daily basis from your schools? What is the superintendent doing with communications to her principals? There was a lot said tonight that I would hope that the superintendent is already aware of, on a regular basis, having these communications with her principals, whether it's Academy Park High School or the other schools in the district. I know there's staffing issues, that I know it's being worked, but I would think the board and the superintendent should be having these communications on a regular basis such that we don't need an emergency meeting. Put out a call to folks to come to the regular school meetings. I know there's a parents' meeting coming up on the 19th. This obviously is before that one, so hopefully we'll get more parents to come to that, that meeting. That one I know about because that one's been advertised. That one I've seen for weeks and weeks and weeks. So, there's probably more parents that would like to be here that don't know about it and there obviously are scheduling conflicts, so I'd just like to keep that in mind for future meetings. Thank you.
Sent out about this meeting. I received, I received a call.
No, that was the parent-student advisory.
I'm sorry. There was Daily Times, put in Daily Times advertisement for this. This was a last-minute emergency meeting, not like, you know, the parent advisory is planned. So that's just the difference of it.
And, and I can appreciate that and I appreciate the, you know, the emergency meeting. But, but again, if it got to this point, what have, what has the board known about? And if you could please, if somebody could give examples of things you have in here, because I've known there's been issues. I have not been aware that the seriousness of what's going on and what is not going on at the high school. So, I was concerned as a parent before, knew there was issues, trying to get my kids to get motivated and active. Now I'm overly concerned that, do I need to put my kids out of this school? One's a junior, one's a senior. So, if any members would like to address that, be helpful. Thank you.
So I will address that when I speak out to all the board members.
Thanks.
Good evening, Tom Weber, 1523 Baird Avenue in Falcroft. A lot of what I have to mention is actually what Mr. Krathheim said, you know, about the, the meeting. We use robo-call for everything and just because it's in the Daily Times, has anybody seen the Daily Times lately? It's about six pages long. That, that's, you know, kind of a poor excuse in, in my opinion. We use robo-call for everything. If it needs to be an emergency, that's the fastest way to get it out. Robo-call. If it wasn't for a Facebook post that someone happened to tag, you know, family members in, we wouldn't be here either. And hearing the concerns that were brought up. Security officers that need to leave their post, that leaves their front door wide open. That's insane. I walk up to here, you know, I'm, I'm the director for the musical program, you know, one of the directors, you know, and a lot of them know me, but the students, a lot of the students, they just let me in. That should be unacceptable. That door, no one should come through that door. I install security cameras for a living and I, it's, you can't get into schools, the schools that I'm going to, to put these cameras in and update their systems. You know? Anybody can walk up to that door and get let in. It's unacceptable. We have the security monitor there now that, you know, takes a picture, views your bag. But from what the kids are saying, they're rushed through in the morning. They're not getting, some are getting pulled aside, but there's no, you know, rechecking of any of that once it's done. You know, "Oh, yeah, uh, no, it's not what we're looking for." But they never really looked in the bag to see what was in that bag. You can conceal a whole lot of stuff. And like I said, only because I know, because that's the industry I'm in. You know, I do appreciate everybody taking their time to be here, you know, and listen to the concerns, but the generic way the meeting was posted, APS, APHS concerns. I asked multiple times, "What does it mean?" I got no answer. No answer. When I walked through the front door, I asked, "What is this meeting about? Maybe I need to be here, maybe I don't need to be here." I'm glad I stayed. Because my daughter, after being in cyber school, not with the school district for eight years, came back this year. I don't know if I want her here. And I work for the school district as a supplemental contractor. It's, it's disheartening what we heard tonight about the, the, you know, the security officers have to leave their post. Floors are empty. My opinion, teachers, it's not the teacher's responsibility to monitor the hallways. Watch over it, but there needs to be security here. That needs to be a priority if there's that many fights. You know, one a day, I went to this school, granted, a long time ago, things were different. My other, my only other question is, what is the policy when school is out to get the students that don't need to be here out of the building? Because I've come in at different times throughout the day, after school hours, and there's people everywhere, students everywhere, sitting out front on the, the desks that was, you know, the big lobby desk, they're sitting on top of it, nothing's being said. They're not supposed to be here, they're just hanging out at the school. If they're not supposed to be here, Ms. Iron said, you know, "It's has to school district." They shuttle them out. If they're not supposed to be here, they shuttle them out to get them out the door. It's not that, not that I don't want it to be the school district problem, so don't take that the wrong way, but it's not the school district problem anymore. Now it becomes back on the parent, where's your child at if they're not at school? You know, and if we offer the programs that everybody's, you know, asking for and we, I guess it sounds like they're being mandated to do clubs? I haven't heard that from my daughter, but she's involved in a lot of stuff. She's playing soccer, she's part of the musical, so she's clubbed out. But I, I just think she, you know, it needs to be addressed, the security to start with and then staffing in general, it sounds like. The principal and the administrative team needs help. They can't do it by themselves. You guys can't do it by help, by yourselves, but you guys have the power to get them the help. They need the help. We can't hold anybody sitting up front here accountable until they're fully staffed. Once they're fully staffed and they get everything they asked for, then you can hold them accountable. Until then, they're doing the best they can and I support the staff of this high school. I support everybody sitting at this table. Every, you know, a lot of you, you know, were all elected in or appointed and I appreciate the time that you spend with our children. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Deb Jeter, teacher at Academy Park High School. I am going to speak as real as I possibly can because that's the only thing I know. I was born and raised here, I'm from Academy Park, and this is exactly what I'm going to say. Holy crap, are we tired. As a teacher, let me just tell you, it is exhausting. I am here right now at this time, I have been here since seven o'clock this morning, just so I could hear what your concerns are, what your concerns are about our school, my community, which I feel, my family, your children are my children. But I'm tired. Real tired. I'm tired of the way that I'm treated here. I'm tired of the disrespect. I'm tired of the unloading of things that are not my responsibility being put on to And I'm tired of feeling like I have to lift this school on my shoulders every day. I have a family of my own at home. My daughter, who used to be at Harris, she's now at Drexel Hall Middle School, all she wants in life is to come back here. She ran these halls from the time she was three years old until now, even now when she comes back. This is where she wants to come back to. She wants to be here at Academy Park. And I come home looking like this. And I'm tired. And worn down. And I've been spoken to like I have no kind of sense. And not just by children, because I'll tell you what, the kids here, they're not going to speak to me like that, but they do to some other people. By adults. You want to know why we're missing teachers? You want to know why we're missing teachers? Because we are told, "If you don't like it, leave." And that comes not, that comes from the top down. You don't like it, leave. You don't want to listen, you don't want to communicate, you don't want to share information, what are you going to do? You're going to leave. For me, this is my heart. When I came back here, my idea was to retire from here. This is my heart and soul. It's what I wanted to do my whole life. I don't know. This is my school. As an alumni, as a teacher, as a community member, I'm teaching my friends' children. I can't stand the way that it is right now. All I do, all day long, is shh, bring them into my classroom, bring them into my classroom and try to keep them there and do the best I can. But I should not have to be on survival mode. And that comes from the top down. We need the resources. We need people in this building. We need you to know who our kids are and who our community is. You have to know our children. You need to be in our building. Thank you.
Peaceful greetings. Good evening, board members, community. I like to sit back and just listen because I find that it's interesting and most informative to listen to other perspectives. And I've lived long enough to realize that an unformed opinion really is a failure to understand one's own position. Now, there are many things that were brought to my attention this evening that I was not aware of. But ironically enough, you guys have some of the best staff that I've ever had the pleasure of having those types of relationships with. There was an issue earlier with one of my two sons who attends this school, where there was a serious concern for his well-being and safety. Now, luckily, because of good staff and previous relationships that's built upon trust, and again, I want to reiterate, that as elected officials, I can send you the Supreme Court case if you like, your trustees. The community are the beneficiaries of said public trust. I am going to hold you to your oaths. If I have to send you a Freedom of Information Act request demanding your oaths and bonds to your office in order to hold you accountable, to get you to perform, that's exactly what I will do. Please don't be confused. I'm very, very educated. I hold two advanced degrees. And there are many things that I heard from the principal in particular that made me a bit more empathetic with the gentleman. But I need him to understand something. One of the most impactful experiences I ever had was my sixth grade teacher. Her name was Mrs. McKay. I almost want to tear up just thinking about her. But our nickname for her was Sergeant McKay because she believed in discipline, she believed in hard work, she believed in accountability. And trust me, she held you accountable. At the time, I could not appreciate that. But what I need the principal to also understand, because my first interaction with him was not a very positive one. While I am a disciplinarian, I believe in boundaries, I believe in the law, I uphold the Constitution, I hold my own sons accountable, just as I hold myself accountable. We're all trustees, ladies and gentlemen. God gave you a gift. Those children don't belong to you. I'm waiting for someone to tell me that I'm wrong. But to be the best version of you, it's not enough to just be forced on being strict. It says a lot when the staff and the children feel as though that they're in a prison institution. And to be rather honest, I've made this analogy quite a while ago. There needs to be flexibility. It becomes, love also has compassion. Love also has the ability to oversee a multitude of faults. But at the same time, I'm a reasonable man. Those who would take it to the extent where they feel that it is appropriate to transgress those boundaries and become violent towards someone else need to be removed from the environment, regardless of the financial impact. And I do remind the board that according to Title 15, a school is a financial institution. Don't make me take it there. There is enough blame to go around to everyone. We all know the problem. We need these parents involved. They can't do it alone. The staff cannot do it alone. He's one man. Some of the best relationships I have are tied to this school district. Now, I'm from Pinewood. Hey, I know, I know, don't get at me, y'all. But I've come to Love Academy Park, I've been out here almost 20 years. This is my friend's child. Your child is my child. We always talk about how it takes a village. Where is the village? Those are my comments.
Patrick McGowan, 421 Clifton Avenue, Sharon Hill. I just had a couple quick comments or whatever. So, in terms of staffing, Ms. Bing brought up a really interesting, you know, figure. My son actually pointed this out to me a couple weeks ago when we were looking on the website. Of his five AP teachers he's had here, AP course teachers that he's had here at Academy Park, three have left Academy Park. These are three advanced placement teachers that got him prepared to go to Drexel University and do great things. My question to the board, to the administrators, when these teachers resign their position, do you have an exit interview? Do you ask them, "What are your concerns? You know, how can we rectify your concerns? Do we try to win their business back to keep them within the district?" I mean, we're losing some great talent here, some really great talent. I recently made a Facebook post about how proud I am of my student, who's at Drexel because of what he's doing, but I purposely pointed out that people in Southeast Delco get a bad rap, teachers get a bad rap because... Teachers get a bad rap because they say you can't get a great education here in Southeast Delco. And that's just not true. My kids from kindergarten through the day they graduated, every one of their teachers told them, you can do this, and they strived for it. So my question is, if the principal is telling you he needs support and the teachers are telling you, and by the way, all my kids so far have had mischetter. So I can tell you, her tiredness, it has to be bad if she is tired, by the way, just so you know. But my question is, if they're telling you they need to support, I see out there that you guys go on your annual, you know, school board retreat or whatever it is for the annual, you know, the state, you know, conference. We always say, we don't have money, taxes are going up. How about we forego some of those incineraries and get the support we need? Prioritize the support that they need. My wife said, I have a 13-year-old who's in eighth grade getting ready to come over to this school. I am terrified. He wants to come here so bad, just like his siblings. I am terrified that he's going to get run over and either forgotten about or worse, you know, a child's worst or a parent's worst nightmare is that they're going to get bullied. So that's one. So really take that and really marinate if you could think about, do you guys offer exit interviews? Do you guys counteroffer these teachers to keep them in their position? That's one. The other thing is, and I'm sorry ma'am, I forget your name right here on the end. Uh, no, Ms. Abney, you asked about recommendations of what we can do differently. I was at an August school board meeting with the presentation about possibly having a junior high school brought back. Do you want to know why the high school is the way it is? We don't have a junior high school. You're pushing these ninth graders all together from all the different community schools all at one time in ninth grade. So you have these big dogs who were in their elementary schools in, you know, seventh and eighth grade. They were the kings of the schools, queens of the schools. Now you're coming to the high school, and now they're trying to jockey to see who's better. It is a reason why the junior high school plan works is because that is a very crucial part of their development, okay? So putting it into a junior high school, a seventh and eighth grade or sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, will allow them to build those relationships up because you're coming from each community school into a junior high school setting. Now, is that something that you guys can do like next year? Obviously not. But here is a simple solution. How about you have your high school administration work with your community school, your elementary school administration, identify high-risk children who are maybe behavioral children. You know, maybe have some type of that mentoring program where you have the 12th graders, not just mentoring the freshmen, but maybe go down to the middle school, to seventh and eighth, you know, and, you know, bring them together in that capacity. This way, you're kind of cutting it off before it happens. You're identifying high-risk behavioral, you know, kids who are in seventh and eighth grade. And you're not forcing them in ninth grade to just sink or swim, you know? That is my opinion. If we're going to really look at solutions, you can't just start at ninth grade. You actually have to go back into the elementary school level. Thank you.
Latanya Manson.
Like now, since I've seen this so often. No, you was right, but I'm just saying I didn't put it on there. Do I need this mic? Okay, I don't got to introduce myself and all that stuff. Latanya Manson, Derby Township Cheerleading Coach. I'm only talking about safety a little bit. My biggest concern is what happened in the freshman boys' basketball locker room. That's my biggest concern. I am the cheerleading coach. We have practice in the main gym. I know that the boys have to come through the main gym to get in the locker room because their coach does not have keys to get in that locker room. No, it is not the main locker room for the football players, which is the varsity one, which is on the other side, but I'm talking about the boys' locker room for gym. What, because y'all kept that on a hush, I need y'all to know that too. But the kids talk, especially my girls, they going to tell me everything. Oh, by the way, staff, if any of my cheerleaders give you any problem, you need to let me know immediately because at no time should they ever be disrespectful, at no time. They don't disrespect me and they're not going to disrespect any of y'all. My profession first is the educator. I've been teaching for 22 years and I'm on your side first. And then they become a cheerleader. Okay, now, as far as what happened, what are we doing? Because I know for a fact y'all expelled nobody and that was, I know for a fact it wasn't horseplay. So my question is, what is being, what has been done? As far as, do y'all know what happened in the bathroom? Why? That's something that they should know. Y'all got us here for concerns. My concern is the safety for the students in the building. So I, it was, horseplay is from what I'm concerned, but students were doing things that was inappropriately in the boys' locker room. And when I say inappropriately, it was very, that wasn't horseplay because had that been done in the females' locker room, it would have been called something else. I just want to know. Yes, that's a question for anybody, the board or administration. The question is, what has been done? And suspension is not it. That ain't it. Suspense, for what, for what happened, suspension is not it. So what was done besides suspension? Was there any interventions popping off? Did anybody get expelled? Did anybody, did anybody talk to the parent? And I mean by talk to the parent, I mean really talk to the parent and the kids that this was done to. What was done, what was happening?
I can answer.
Okay.
I can talk what I personally done, have done. I spoke to all of the parents, not just the parent of the child that was a part of the victim. I spoke to every parent, any part that their child had on it. I contacted the Sharon Hill Police and spoke with the chief and had him call the district attorney to determine what would he do. I also spoke to child lines and made a report. And then I had 48 hours to send the report in, but I sent the report in immediately and actually have copies and documentation of what I did outside of what the high school did.
Okay. And my other concern is, I, being the educator, I know, and being the shortage, I know that the staff is overworked. I know they're tired. I am. It's only been two months. And it's like, yo, when's Christmas coming? Because that's, that's how serious it is. Thanksgiving, girl, please. Looking for winter briefs. My other question or my, not my question or my, it's my concern is, I have cheerleaders on the squad who are, their grades are being sent to me. And I request that, that all athletes, their grades are being sent to me. And some of them are receiving grades in classes that they don't even have. Like, it's like day one, day two, and it's first block, second, third, fourth block. I got cheerleaders that are in Vo-Tech receiving failing grades in classes when they are in Vo-Tech instead of being, they're not in the, they're not supposed to be in the building. So if they have Vo-Tech in the afternoon, that means they don't have a third and fourth block. But on my list that I get, and it's a live list, meaning the teachers are putting in the grades, it's showing up that they receiving failing grades in these classes, but they don't even have these classes. I even have a child that's in cyber school and she fell in four classes and she don't even come in the building. So I'm just trying to figure out like how that work. Because I'm holding them accountable. If I see an F, you're not cheering. Period. And they're telling me, well, I was, I don't even have this class, I don't have this, I don't have that. Well, the guidance counselors don't answer the phone. So it's me and Hooven, and Hooven does a lot of things. So it's hard for him to contact me or to get right back to me to tell me, hey, she doesn't have this class, she doesn't have that class, or I don't know what happened. So, and I, like, Mr., like the principal said, and the teacher said, they're covering classes. They're doing a lot. Yes, they may be getting compensated, but however, it's, it's becoming a problem. When I start out with 24 and I'm at homecoming and I'm down to 10 because of grades, but out of the 10, seven of them are getting grades in classes that they don't even have. Well, we try not to, you know, you're supposed to be protocols. You go step by step by step. I'm tired of fighting. I fight for more than their parents fight, but you know, they mine, so I'm going to go all out. Is there any guidance counselors here? Oh, you want to answer? Okay. Yes, I'll finish.
Thank you.
Jacob K. Mr. K, and after Mr. K, there is a, someone here to speak to security.
Good evening. I don't really have much to say. I don't know who this concerns, but, the advisory. Are there, because there's our, there's, during advisory, there is the clubs during it, but are there, I don't think that we should be required to have clubs, even though I do think we should be involved in the school. I don't think that we shouldn't be required to or forced to. I think that those clubs should be available after school, maybe in between the time of when practice starts for game, for sports and when school ends. So from 2:15 to 3:00, which is when my practice starts, or something like that. Also, I do think that we should have night games back because they're fun. Thank you.
I, like I said to the gentleman above, I'm going to speak after all of the other board members speak and the community. I did visit three buildings. I am an educator, so the only time I can visit buildings are when I have off from work. So I usually get, I got to three buildings last week. And just like the parents in here, I was disturbed. So I called a good friend, a good family friend of mine, and it's called Safe Corridors. So I would like them to come up and speak about their nonprofit that other school districts and other charter schools have in there. So would the two gentlemen like to please come up to the night, and young lady, I'm sorry, and the young lady? If you're coming. Safe Corridors.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan King. I am the CEO of Safe Corridors and I have with me Mr. George Mink, who's from this community, and one of my partners, Ms. Risa DeSilva. I'm from the city of Chester, where we have similar problems as you do. I'm an alumni from Chester High. I graduated in 1984. And when I say I understand your issue, I really empathize. I sat here and listened to most of the parents and staff. I worked for a couple of school districts inside and out, dealing with this particular issue. I've done Alice training, I've been training with the FBI, I've been training with the state. I've been around the block a few times. In my brochure, and I will try to give everyone here one so you can see it, our program for Safe Corridors has four bullet points. One of them, the first one, which is the concern here, I believe, is safe corridors. So this is a safety team that protects children arriving and departing from school every day. The other part of it is, we work inside the school to control climate, environment, right? It's not here as like a security, but like a community engagement with parents and children. We like to teach the children, the on-hand experience. It's not just about suspending them and, like any educator in here, expelling is our last, is the last thing we need to do. Like, so when we created this thing, we wanted to see how it worked and how it would be safe for the community. And the thing we know, right, from being in the education, and one of my partners, she's been an educator for 20 years. So I had the advantage of learning from professors and teachers and former superintendents and from all the way down to the bottom receivers and all of those kind of things. We know that money plays a role in this issue. We know that. But I thought about it. I said, why do we always use money as an excuse to take care of our children? Why do it always have to be the underlying thing when it comes to our children? When I went to one school, between the receiver and the superintendent, they both made about a half a million dollars. And I said to myself, if we can pay two people that kind of money, why won't we use the money that actually is invested for our children? The investment for our children, I believe, is the best investment we can have, right? Because you work for them. They are the beneficiaries, right? If there's no children, there's no school. Right? And I think people got that part kind of backwards. Like, they need us. No, we need them. So most schools that I work for, and I just want to let you know that I cover every school in the city of Chester now. Every single school, every charter, every public school. We cover it. We protect the young men and women arriving, departing every day. You haven't seen Chester on the news lately because of this action. The school I started it from at CCSA, Chester Scholars Charter Academy, is the safest school in the city of Chester. No shootings, no fights after school, no stabbings, no riots after school, none of that, none. And that school, if any of you know about it and seen it, is probably one of the most beautiful schools in the city of Chester that sits on 15th and Holland Avenue in the middle of two war zones, Holland Gardens and McCaffely Village. So even before we put our men in these schools and in this perimeter of the school, because when children feel safe, when they're going to school, they got an opportunity to learn. When children feel safe leaving school, they want to come back the next day, right? So I'm thinking, when I, I'm sorry. I'm thinking if the school district of, this is Southeast Delco, correct? I will encourage the parents in the board to really look into safe corridors. This will be a blessing to your community. This would be a blessing to your children, right? And most of all, this would be a blessing to your township. I was here before, a couple of months ago. I'm the guy that, yeah, I did the expungement part in clinic here. And I'm going to tell you, when I was here, I was impressed. I'm gonna tell you, when I was here, I was impressed. And when I saw the community came out from all of the surrounding areas, from Fallcroft, from Upper, from Darby Township, all of the places, they said this was one of the most successful events ever in this high school. This room should be packed. And y'all have to do things kind of like the old school way, right, and the twenty-first century way. Put the kids out to pass flyers when we do stuff. We want to hire people from Safe Corridors from this community. So, the people that will be working in this community and in, in this area, they won't be from Chester. They will be from here, right? Uh, this is my point guy. He's from here. He's, he lives in this area. He lives in this community. We can recruit the people, men and women. We can train them. We can show them how it works. We can bring them down to, a lot of my sites down in Chester. Chester has one of the roughest schools in the United States. Y'all know that. So, I'm, I'm really, I, I came here with a solution. I, I didn't come here to try to find a job or to get a contract. We didn't come do that. We wanted the opportunity for you guys to look at what we have, and it's working, right? You don't have to reinvent a wheel that's already rolling. So, I don't want to hold up a lot of people's time, but I will have brochures for everyone if they want one, to look at it, parents, and pass the word. Safe Corridors is coming to a community near you. If you have any questions, I'll ask it if you want me to.
Hello, I'm sorry. Um, I'm Cherie Monroe Whitsett, and, uh, once again, I want to say thank you. Um, I did a ten-year expungement camp, and, uh, Mr. Mink, I had reached out to him about, um, him and some other gentlemen in the community about starting a mentoring program. Um, and then I had emailed Mr., um, excuse me, I had emailed the principal, and the principal directed me to the person who was starting the mentor program. And so, um, we were talking, and, um, and I hope and pray that, um, those board members, the other board members, because I can't, I can only speak for myself, um, will take a serious look at this program. My godson went to Chester Achievement Charter School, um, and even though it's behind the gate, it's kind of crazy, when I walked into the building, you felt the warmth, you felt the unity that you talked about. You felt the sense of community. A student got out of line, immediately was pulled to the side, talked to, wasn't yelled, wasn't doing any of that. Um, then the young man came back and apologized to all the parents that was around when he was cutting up. Um, so I was like, whoa, this is pretty cool. Um, I didn't know the name of the program at the time, um, until Mr. Mink had told me. Um, and I've been hearing great things about it, um, at, uh, Chester Community Charter as well. Um, so, uh, I will hope and pray that, uh, the parents in this audience, teachers, administrators, uh, take a look at the program. One thing I think is key about this program, as someone spoke in the audience about it, is community. They're not, they're not hiring, they're not training anyone outside of the community of the district where the district lies. They want those parents. They want those uncles. They want those grandfathers. They want those retirees. That's willing, even if they only can do an hour, thirty minutes, maybe those individuals might want to come and supervise the lunchroom. Because when I did the calculations for fifteen hundred students, um, at a minimum of three hundred people in the lunchroom, you need fourteen bodies.
At least.
At the minimum.
Yeah, minimum.
So, a program of this nature, I think would put an impact on the community of APHS. So, again, I hope that every parent, teacher, and administrator in the building, and even some of the students in here, take a look at it. And see if this would work for eliminating some of the concerns in the, uh, the only high school we have. So, I hope the board members take it seriously, and, um, I want to thank you for taking the time out to come and, um, speak. I really appreciate it.
May I tell everybody the website?
Yes.
And our email. Our website is www.safecorridors.net, and our email is safecorridors@gmail.com. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more cards? I know I had three emails. People had emailed in. It's only three of them.
Dustin Webster? Webster? Nestor?
Hi, I'm, I'm really glad I came tonight. Um, I, I'll introduce myself. Uh, my name's Austin Nestor. Everyone calls me AJ. Um, I'm, I'm a lucky guy. I'm a musician. Um, I'm a trumpet player. People ask me what I do for a living. I tell them I blow into a hollow tube real hard. Um, and I do. Uh, I worked for a couple of years in two different occasions for a local Catholic school where I was able to get a job as the band director, even though I'm not an accredited teacher. Okay, yeah, hands in the hands. Um, I went to teachers' meetings. I went to, uh, in services and was just blown away by the weight the teachers have to carry in terms of staying on top of their professions. Um, you know, and the common thought that teachers don't work that hard. Hey, they get the whole summer off. They spend that summer working, trying to catch up with everything they got behind on, trying to repair their classrooms, trying to figure out how they're gonna have enough pens for every kid, because schools don't, you know, uh, money doesn't fix everything. But schools don't have enough money. It's, that's such common knowledge, no one even says it. You know, when, when teachers have to buy pens and paper, when there isn't a pencil sharpener in every classroom. I mean, what, what do you write with? You know, I use pencils. I don't know. They're cheap and they work, and when they break, you sharpen them and they start working again. It's a miracle. Um, I have a student here, his name is, well, no, we're not supposed to do names. That's right. He's, he's, um, um, he's on the spectrum. He's in special ed down in, you know, they have their little corner here. And I, I first, I want to publicly say thank you to the entire school for the attitude that they foster amongst the students here toward the special ed kids. When I was little, we saw the short bus come in, and we never met any of those kids. Uh, when these, these kids can walk the halls here, and everyone knows who they are. You know, I think even the, the bad kids know who they are, and they look out for them. Uh, my kid's a senior. He's never had a problem, not even once. So, I, I wanted to share some of the good news. Um, thank you for taking care of these kids. Um, my kid's looking at going to Voc Tech and, you know, doing some, you know, like, uh, video editing, stuff like that. Turns out he might have some skills there, which is great. It's all been fostered. Um, I do think it's important to reach out to the community. Uh, first of all, I'm quite sure the parents here mostly have kids that are making pretty good grades, because if they don't, they're gonna have to hear it from you guys. Yeah, anyway, I don't know. I, I'm, maybe there's a parent here who has a troubled kid, but I'm willing to bet most of your kids are doing pretty good. Uh, mine has done fantastically well here. Um, and I did, you know, like, I knew the reputation of the school. I did not have high hopes coming in. And I've been blown away by all the teachers in that department and, you know, by proxy, all the other teachers here. God, I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you get up in the morning, and I, I don't know how you do it. It's hard work. Um, I think we could, it would be helpful to start reaching out to the community and seeing how people can get involved at the school. I'm a musician. Obviously, the music department is where I would, you know, be more than happy to contribute. It doesn't seem like, I, and obviously, you know, like, there's, normally with teachers, you have all the clearances. There's all kinds of complications when you get people involved with kids, and I don't know what the practical, you know, uh, upshot of that would all be. Um, you know, like, if I were to come in and do like, uh, a clinic, um, for, you know, like, the, the wind players, for instance, or the drummers, um, or even, you know, come into chorus, 'cause, you know, everyone seems so afraid to sing. They all say, everyone wants to sing unto the person they're next to. How do we try and get them to drown each other out? Then you know something's happening. When everyone in the chorus is trying to drown out everyone else in the chorus. And that's coming from a trumpet player. We specialize in drowning people out, particularly woodwind players. Um, and string players are not exempt either. Um, but I, uh, I was lucky. I grew up in a middle-class suburb in New Jersey. I went to a, a fine high school, a Catholic high school. Um, our show department was arguably second to none, and I went to a gathering of people, the arts departments, a couple of years ago, and everyone who got up to speak could, didn't even need the microphone. Everyone knew how to, everyone knew how to fill an auditorium with their voice without yelling. They knew how, because our director would sit in the back of the hall, and we'd be on stage with no microphones, and you would just hear this voice coming up, "I can't hear you," and he drilled it under our heads, how to talk to a group of people. I wouldn't be able to do this without having been in Godspell, which was the one show I was actually in, as opposed to being a musician. Um, and I had to come in singing all by myself, and I don't know how that, I did it. I really don't. But then, you know, that's what that program did for me. I, you know, I'm speaking up for arts programs, 'cause they do things that you don't know they do. They make people who can stand in front of a crowd and speak coherently and audibly, simple stuff, but, you know, like, you know, we had one, uh, at least one or two people stand up here tonight who did not want to speak in public. You know, and that's, that's what you can learn how to do, just by being in a play, being in the band, being in the chorus. You can learn how to participate in your community. But I think there's probably a lot of talent out there, and I know there's a lot of friction in our communities. Sharon Hill's largely black. Fallcroft is largely white. It's mixing a little bit. I see the friction. You know, I see, I see the looks, you know, and I, I, you know, I see some real, and I'll put, I'll put it right out there. I see some really bad attitudes on the part of the white people. Nice, really bad attitudes, and that doesn't help. Um, and trying to bring these two communities together in one school, we see the friction. There's fights. I don't know the nature of the fights, thankfully. You know, I, I got the sweetest kid in the world who, if he got in a fight, it would be because someone said something really horrible to him, and he just exploded. Because if you're on the spectrum and you flip the switch, it's, look out. They, they will not let you, they will not let you pass. Um, so, I, I, you know, my kid's a senior. I'm still gonna be living here in town, though. Um, happy to stay involved with the community. Um, but there's probably a lot of talent out there that would be happy to, you know, share their talents within the school. And also, the parents of the kids who have the hardest time are probably parents who had a pretty hard time themselves. Um, you know, especially if you're black. You've got the short end of the stick from day one, and anyone who knows any real history knows that, and I'm painfully aware of it. And that creates entire communities of angry people who have an absolute right to be angry. Wow, I'm going off. Um, so, I, 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 there are those of us who understand, and we get it, and we'd love to be able to help, but you, it's hard to just walk up to someone in the store and say, hey, I care, other than just trying to be friendly and, you know, not be, pardon my French, a douche about it. You know, and, you know, make the cashier, make the cashier laugh. Don't give her a hard time. Make her chuckle. You'll probably get out of the store a lot easier, you know? Let's try and be nice to each other. But how do we communicate that to the general population of a high school, you know, where your best friends come in all shapes, sizes, and colors? And I also went to a music school. I went to one party with twenty people at it. There were eighteen different countries represented there, and I'm talking weird ones, like Malaysia and Israel. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't the ones you'd expect. Um, and we had a blast, you know, from every, you know, we all had the common thing of being musicians, but, um, we musicians are lucky, because when we come together to work, we really don't care. We just want, if you can play, you can play. Come on in. That's all there is to it. So, we're very lucky. We have a relatively civilized community that can also be cutthroat and horrible and cheap and just like everything else. So, um, reach out to the parents of the community. See, you know, what are your talents? You know, what can you share with our kids? You know, here are the clubs we have. Can you come in one day? And, you know, how you vet these people, and I, I don't want a principal's job. Uh, so, that's, I just thought I'd open, offer a little hope, a little positivity. Um, and, yeah, let's get the word out to more people, because the people with the kids who are doing good, you know, that's, that's great, but it's, you know, it's the, it's the angry parents with the angry kids. And how do you handle the angry parents? Maybe, you know, give them something to be happy about. Okay, that's my two cents, and sorry to waste all your time.
So, excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Um, I think that was a great idea, the clinic for music. Um, if you can give one of the principals your name and telephone number?
That'd be great.
That would be great. And just to let you know, the clearances are free to volunteer in any public school. And, um... And, uh, I think that Ms. Perry, who is heading the Parents Student Advisory Committee, wink, wink, will have a session on how to become a volunteer in the district. Thank you so much, Ms. Perry. Are there any more comments?
Margaret Bean?
Hello again. I was quick, because I thought three minutes and sit down. I didn't know. Ms. Shatter, I love you. I do. I love you. Um, there are a lot of great, this mic is loud, the feedback. Um, there are a lot of great teachers at Academy Park. I, for those who might not know, I work at Darby Township. I am the secretary. I will go ahead and say it's me, whatever. As far as the community aspect of the issues, I love this program. There's a lot of fighting in the community, and I've said for a long time to the assistant superintendent, there needs to be a middle school. Um, what I see on a daily basis, the parents that I see, they come in and hold up a lot of our time, our administrator time. They're not here. Let's just be real. They're not here. Um, it happens out in the community, and it rumbles right into our school. And then I hear, my kids will tell me, this person's name, that person's name. It's funneling right in here. It's coming from the eighth graders, straight up into the high school. Something's gotta be done. I talk to these kids ad nauseam. Most of my business day is helping children in this community. Um, children with problems. I try to meet at the front door, because there's just not enough staff, even in my building. There's not enough staff. There's not, we have one security guard. He can't be everywhere. Um, we don't have enough aides. We don't have, you know, we don't have hall monitors. What's that? We don't have the support even in the one to eight buildings to do this. We know that those issues are funneling right into the high school. It's a big issue. I can say Friday night in Downingtown, the boys got into a fight, and I ended up in the locker room. Something has to be done. I don't know what your schedule is. I'm at every game, because I have a senior. I love the football games. I love it. My husband will tell you, football nights, I'm like, psh, I'm out. That's my break. Because a lot of my week, he gets upset, because I'm at that school until five thirty, six o'clock, because that's my time to actually work, because I'm not interrupted with behaviors and phone calls and interrupted by teachers, because that's their prep time, and they need this and they need that. There's only one of me, and I gotta split myself a thousand different ways to be everything for everybody. I'm the secretary. I'm the secretary and I am beat. I am beat. I'm tired. This is my 14th year in the district. I did four or five at the K Center. This is my ninth year at the high, at, uh, not the high school. Lord, I don't want to come here. At Derby Township. But I give my all to Southeast Delco. I give my all to Derby Township. I love Derby Township. I try to help as much as I can. I try to, you know, encourage these children. They have a multitude of needs. These kids don't have a lot coming into our buildings. And I know that's everywhere. I know it's everywhere. But there's only six buildings. There's six, six buildings? There's only six buildings. And it boggles my mind at how, and I'm speaking as an employee. It boggles my mind how a school district's so small because I graduated from Pennwood. Um, I graduated from Pennwood. But I, I was just amazed at how a school district so small has so many different intricacies and, and, and issues, so small. And I mean, this right here is a testament, and I know a lot of people had to leave that were here. When I say a lot, I mean compared to who's here now from who was here. But these seats should be filled. When we were here for bake the school night, I mean, I sat in Ms. Shatter's class and it was like me and two other parents. I, it, it, it's crazy. I mean, it got to the point where I'm like, I, I don't even want to come. I was having some issues. And so we came this year because we're at every other one any other time, you know, most of the time. But it got to the point you get burnt out. It's a lot on the staff. I'll, I'll say for the support staff, it's a lot on us. It's a lot. I spread myself so thin. And I try to, you know, be at the front door talking to parents. But when I'm at the front door, I'm not at my desk. So that phone is ringing. And then people, you want me to answer the phone? Well, I can't be at the front door helping get people in if I'm, you know, not at my desk and I can't. We had a security issue. The door wasn't working and the, the, the attendant's aide had to go sit out in the hallway. And people are like, well, what's wrong? Something's wrong with y'all. No! We should gotta let people in because there's nobody to let people back and forth between the doors. There's so many issues. And I, and, and we have high schoolers that get dropped off at that high, at the, at Derby Township School, which they should be. They should be dropped off there. But when they get out sometimes, there's melee there and we gotta shoe 'em away. It just filters all the way through. So I just want to speak on behalf of the staff, the support staff. I, 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 at the, um, the games, it's a bad look, y'all. It's a bad look. What I saw last Friday, I rushed in there not thinking about, I went into four or five hours earlier with my badge still on and ran in there like, yo, what's going on? Yo, like, stop. Had a kid up against the gate and all. Because I'm always thinking about the kids and the safety, but it's a, it's embarrassing. It's a bad look. I have parents who call, who are eighth grade parents. I don't want to send my kid to Academy Park. I get it. Truth be told, and I don't bash Academy Park. I don't. Truth be told, you see Chichester's on the news. You see, you know, maybe Ridley was on the news, Upper Derby. Somebody just got stabbed in the face. It, it's everywhere. So I try to tell people it, that the, the issues are everywhere. But I believe, like Rox said earlier, that sense of pride that we had when I first came into this district, it's fizzling fast. It's fizzling real fast. Staff is tired. The parents who are coming or, 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 you know, um, available to help, they're tired. People are stretched thin. The influx with, with different kids and issues and stuff. It's, it's hard. It's really, really hard, but something has to happen. We really do need help and we need help to get it to not funnel up into the high school where the high school can be the high school. Because on a daily basis, I'm running down the classrooms. I'm, I'm helping security. I, when my principal and my vice principal are tied up with parents or they broke up a fight and something else pops off, I take off, no questions asked, because I don't want a child on my watch to get hurt. I will go down and break up a class. I'll go down and yell at, at, at class in the hallway to cut it out and be quiet and, and get themselves together. It's exhausting. My voice is raw because that's what I do all. I can be walking down barroom and before I even get to Derby Township, I'm fussing at kids. It is all day. We are tired. The staff were burnt out. And I mean, even with the high turnover of staff, it's hard on the good staff you got left. That's just what it is. I mean, I gotta post them today for another new position that we gotta fill. So I mean, it's like, what do we do? I mean, we as a community, if this is being televised, if y'all are watching, get y'all kids together. Get them together. Being on, being the school on time. Being accountable. I, I know I get phone calls about my own kids and I have to make them accountable. We, we have to parent and make them accountable for what they're doing and, and, and when they're slipping, we have to pick them up and say, no, this, we're not doing this. This is not representation of who we are. Y'all parents out there, if y'all are watching, if this gets televised, I'm telling you, this is what we're dealing with. The staff in these schools that y'all want to send these kids to every day because y'all don't want them home? Y'all got to send us a little bit better and make it a little bit easier on us. The money is tight. The staff is tight. The time is short. We need help. We're asking help from the board, of course. We're, we're, we're talking about the, the high school. But it does funnel up from the kindergarten center all the way up. I think, I went to one of the games and I saw something that was really cute for their homecoming. I forget, I forget where we were. I'm sleepy. I forget where we were at, but it was somewhere at Malvern. Their homecoming, their little ones ran out before the, 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 the football team. But it was a sense of community and they got them in, involved. Our older kids were ramblers. I can't tell, we, I'm ramblered out. Rambler, rambler, rambler. We, I, I Saturdays and rambler, rambler. But I mean, if you get them to come out and be a part of it, Folkcroft, I think, has a football team. Um, I know Derby Township has a football team. Get them involved young and want to be a part of what's going on with the different high school teams. And maybe that might give them a changed mind because we gotta get these kids from here. Because by the time they get in here, it's too late. We can't change this crap that's in here like this. It's, it's too late. I saw a kid, um, a guy trying to corral kids to Dembelonger here when I was here. And I had to stop myself and say, no, not my circus, not my monkey. It's not my problem. Because at some point I do have to be off the clock. But this is, this is just where we're at. I, I tried to do three minutes, my little spiel and sit down, but, because I didn't know the nature of the meeting. But I do want to express to y'all, it's really hard. But that's my kind of solution from the kindergarten center. Get that school involved and feed it up into the one to eighth and then feed it up into the high school. Feed it up from here because I worked at the kindergarten center. The same old kid, I can see them now and be like, they're, they're in 12th grade or whatever. Well, a couple of years ago, they were 12th grade. And I would say, you're so and so and such and such. And they would say, how you know? Because I wrote you late passes all the time. The stuff don't, the behaviors don't change, but we gotta get them when they're here. And then if you get them when they're here, then maybe as they get up and they keep seeing the same things, the continuity through the district, the continuity, the same people are saying the same things. It's not changing. So maybe something will stick and you gotta get it together because you're tired of hearing the same thing. The same disciplines, the same, um, uh, resources being, you know, age appropriate, of course, but the same, um, uh, protocols being offered to these kids. You know, some incentives, some this, some that. I mean, my principal, he's new. He's doing a lot of, you know, good incentives and stuff. But you gotta get them to buy in. I really don't think just forcing the clubs on the kids is getting them to buy in right now because there's just so many issues. It's stressful to them. I'm saying that because that's how my kids feel. I, the young man spoke earlier. I think that's the consensus. Not that it's a bad idea, and I don't know if that's your idea, but I, I just don't think that they can bite into that right now when they're worried about safety, fighting, going viral on TikTok and everything else. We gotta kind of get those things under control first. We gotta take care of our staff who is tired. Try to, I don't know what we can do as far as that. We keep showing up, right? I don't know. I don't know what we do. We just keep showing up. But I, I, I think this is excellent. I, I'm all for it. I'm all for it. Whatever we can do. I try to do, be a one-man show and do that at the front door myself. But, you know, it, it, it does take a village. I, I just need the people watching, listen to what we're saying. Don't just come out with pitchforks and be ready. It's a community problem. And it starts from here. And it's coming up here. And that's why this is the way that it is. And for us tired souls that are still left sitting here tonight, I do thank you.
Yes, give me one second. So there are some comments from people who signed, well, sent it, sent their comments in. Yeah, would you like me to, the emails you want to come up? Mr. Kill, would you like me to read it? Okay. Oh, you addressed it last night. You did. Okay, you're fine. Thank you. So it's two emails. One is from Ms. Jackson. I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson, I will be forwarding that email to, um, the appropriate administration. Once again, if you're sending that email in, please make sure you have your residence on the email. So I will forward that to the appropriate, uh, administrators. Ms. Francesca Barley, is that her name right? Ms. Barley? Hi, my name is Ms. Francesca Barley, 418 Lafayette Avenue, Calendula, PA. You all know I use, I'm usually there. However, I'm currently in Europe. Another continent wouldn't stop me from voicing my concerns with the high school. Here are my concerns from what I have seen and what my child tells me. Number one, the hallways are uncontrollable. There are kids in hallways at all times. Kids are not in class. Solution, we need more security officers to patrol hallways and keep them clear at all times of the day. Number two, the discipline has become too much for the amount of administrators placed at the high school. Solution, we need additional administration, administrators in Academy Park or dean of discipline so that admin can focus on other issues. One head principal and three assistants is simply not enough in subpar. Number three, the teacher positions have not yet been filled. It is nearly November. I spoke about this in September and I was assured that we are hiring at a rapid pace. Yet, Academy Park is short multiple key subject teachers as well as subs. The second semester will be upon us where we clearly need to offer more classes, yet can't even fill the ones we have. Solution, find the, fill the positions fast. I hope that you can address these issues, but not just talk about what needs to be done, but actually do it. Not just talk about all the people you are hiring or want to hire, but want to see the bodies in the buildings and the results in the hallways. And you can bet you will see me at the next meeting. Thank you, Francesca Barley. Are there any more comments from board members?
Can you hear me? Is my, okay, sorry. Um, so back when the principal was speaking, he mentioned some things that I had heard from staff. Um, and I honestly didn't want to believe it was true. So he did mention that specifically the month of December 2021 was when he brought to administration that he wanted additional security at the high school. And I've also heard from several teachers that they requested a dean of students. So I joined the board in December 2021 and I think I remember my first board meeting very clearly because the tragedy that the principal mentioned was the first piece of upsetting news I received as a school board member. So I think I remember everything that happened that day and I have not missed a meeting since I've joined the board. So I'm curious, and this question's for the administration, is why weren't these requests brought to the board when a principal and staff member had requested them from an administrator? Because I do not recall being told that the high school staff believes they need that much more security or that they need a dean of students or discipline. And I also agree with Ms. Monroe Whitsett with the number of children in the cafeteria. How are we staying in ratio if we're that short-staffed? So my question to administration is, did you know these things? And why didn't you bring them to the attention of the board?
And if you would recall, when we got the Evolve system, we added at least three, uh, security guards. And we made you aware of that. We full out rolled out a whole plan about the, uh, security measures. And prior to hiring, they were having such a difficult time, they couldn't hire security guards. So we used a firm. And the firm was here and unfortunately there continued to be, um, turnover. Am I correct, Mr. Butler?
There were issues with the, uh,
And so it was turnover. So it wasn't that they didn't get them, but we can't make people act right and not have to let them go. And when they're doing things that they shouldn't be doing, we are going to move them out of our building. But we did bring at least three more security guards with the Evolve system. And I think you, um, altogether, I think we spent seven, over $700,000 for the system as well as the security guards. But they're saying now that they need more, but we did the first round.
Okay, so just to clarify, he made the request in December of 2021. The Evolve systems were first used in September 2022. Is that correct?
But we got the security guards before that, that were, we rented from a firm.
Okay, thank you.
And we gotta remember, money, you can't just say, okay, so I came to you all and I don't know if you were working here then, to say that I discovered just in the buildings alone, 21 positions had been cut that they could remember, but we don't know how many more from there. So we started first with replacing the special education positions and trying to make those rooms smaller. So we put in nine positions then. Then due to the subs situation, we've also added 39 positions this school year, which I pointed out to you at the last board meeting when you asked me that out of the 48 positions that were, um, not filled, 29 of them were out of the new positions. But we must remember, our community does, does not want the taxes raised. Uh, we came here, when I came and Mr. Butler came, this school district was $1.2 million in the hole and had cut all those positions. So we can keep adding, but we can't add but so much. Or next, we're going to be sitting down here trying to answer, why are we $3 million in the hole? We can't just add. We have to add some places and then you have to fill the positions you already have. High school math, I know it because that's what I did for. High school math, I know it because that's what I did for a living. It's a very hard position to find people capable and able to do it. So we can post, I don't think most of our interventions for math are even filled because there are certain positions, it is very difficult to find people that are qualified and certified to do it. But there have been discussions, some, some of them may have been prior to you and then some of them have been while you were here that we are feeling. But we can't just add everything because it has to be paid for.
Thank you. Are there any more comments?
Yes, this is Cynthia Woodfolk. Um, I am requesting, uh, it may not be tonight, but, um, I am requesting for, for the board to have an executive session in regards to, um, the matters that we had, um, heard tonight so we can move forward. Uh, like someone said, instead of just sit and talk about it, we have to make a move. We have to do something. So, um...
Ms. Woodfolk, do you have a day or time? A date or time?
I prefer Saturday if everybody's available. Oh, that's right, it's homecoming, I'm sorry.
It's homecoming Saturday, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Um, I don't know, whatever day is when everybody is available.
Uh, we do, Ms. Woodfolk, we do have an executive session, I mean, a committee of the whole meeting coming up next week. So, and we are having an executive session at that time, so not a problem for this to be discussed at that point, on that date, which is next Thursday.
Right, but, I mean, do, we all want to put all, I mean, talk about everything all at one time because I'm thinking that we can have an executive session and the committee of the whole because that's gonna be a lot and people have to work the next day. So that's why I was suggesting to the board to have an executive session, maybe Monday or Tuesday.
Well, I'll have, you know, see what date is available for the board, for everyone, as many as possible as a board member to be there. I don't know what date that will be. But, uh, we'll have it as soon as possible to have the executive session. And I'm sure that from all of the concerns that we've heard here tonight, a lot of these things that I know as a board member, we are not aware of it. And I'm just gonna speak generally, I don't think the, um, some of the administrators are aware of also. So we cannot complete everything at one meeting. So there may be additional executive sessions that we will have to have to continue a lot of these, um, concerns that we've had here tonight. So, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day. And we'll get them all and we'll get back and either you'll see the progress actually in the building and the other schools or we will inform you one way or another what the outcome of all of this is. But just, only thing I'm asking is, this is a lot tonight to digest. All I'm asking for with those who are here, give us time to do the investigation. Give us time to get all of this done so that we can fulfill as many of these requests as, as possible and continue to fulfill the rest of them in the future. So, um, if that's acceptable with those people sitting here. Another thing I would like to say, thank you for those who did come out and fortunately, those who have already left who were here. You're not the ones that should be at this meeting. We have a lot of other parents who have, who were informed, who read about it, got Rover calls, I mean, not Rover, um, Facebook information and everything, but they are not here. You cannot make anybody do anything that they don't want. All we can do is ask. All we can do is put it out there for them. If they're not concerned about their child, then how concerned can we be? We try, I know there's a lot of things that should be done, haven't been done, not aware of. Tonight, this night, October 13, 2022, we are aware of numerous things that are going on in this district. So let's look from this day going forward, what we're gonna do. You know it was in the past. A lot of things that it's over, we can't go back and, and change it. We're moving forward. We're gonna turn this district around. It's gonna take time. Right now, the administrators that we have in place, a lot of them are new. They're coming in and they're cleaning up stuff that was already in place for years. Years before they even hit this door as administrator. And I'm talking about the superintendent and everyone else in, that is new, that came on. You have to give them time. Some of it, they gotta clean up the dirt that was already there in order to move forward. You can't work on dirt and think you're gonna have a clean ending because you're not. It's just like a house. You move into a dirty house, what you gonna have? Continuously have is dirt. Let's clean up what, what was, what can be cleaned up and then we'll move on from there. This is, I, I don't have a child in this district. My, my daughter is, is grown. But my heart is for any child, be it Delco, in whether it's in this district or any district. My heart is for any child. I want every child to get the best education that they possibly can get, whether it's academically or if it's through labor. I want them to be proud of whatever they do. I'm not here sitting here just to twiddle my thumbs and think that I'm not doing anything because I can only speak for myself on this board. I want every child to get the best that they possibly can. And if they don't get it, it will not be the district's fault. You have kids who come in here, supposed to be on time, they're late. You have kids who come in here, don't do their homework. Why? You have kids who come in here, who put their thumb down to get the best education, to do the best they can, who are in need of education, who are in need of good teachers, who are in need of good counselors, who are in need of good administrators. It all takes money. All of it takes money. Now, unless we're gonna get together, everybody puts some money in the pot to help out with some of these things that is going on that we need, that's not, that's, that's possibly can't happen because everybody doesn't have that kind of finances. But what I'm saying to you is, call your senators, call the Congress, call your mayors, call the governors. Let them know how much, how needed finances is needed in this district. Make them aware of it. That's where it all starts. There's more money that can come out of, out of Washington and Harrisburg that can help Southeast Delco than any of us can ever, ever afford. It doesn't take a whole group to go up there. You have, they have offices in our district. You can make appointments and go talk to them. That's all you have to do, talk to them. Tell them what you need. If enough people burn their ear, you'll get some results. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. What's it done?
Ms. Woodfolk?
Yes.
Can you give me one moment, please? We have one card.
Okay.
Please write your, uh, question down. Sean Thomas?
Good evening, everybody. Y'all look good up there, too. I used to work in the district, um, so I got all three points of view or perspective because I was a student, obviously. Um, I'm a parent now of an 11th grader that goes here and I used to work in the school. What I'm gonna say, y'all probably heard already, I just got here a little while ago, so I was trying to get briefed on everything that's been said and been spoken about. I'm just, I'm just gonna go. But I know for me, growing up and for a lot of these children, um, it's about like value and worth. And, um, we really gotta take a look at the school curriculum and the things that's going on and how does that make a black child feel valuable or worth it in their community? Does it make them feel worth it outside of here in their community? Like really, we really gotta answer that question because if it doesn't, you're gonna continue to get what you get and even worse. Right? Because I heard the gentlemen's talk about, you know, black children like inherited this mess. And so that means that we're coming in with, uh, you know, um, more emotional baggage, financial baggage, spiritual baggage, you know, things like that, psychological baggage. So more has to be done for us than anybody else. And I'm not discounting anybody else, but if we're coming in with that much more on our backs untreated, it's a powder keg for, for violence now. Just like in prison, right? There's no outlet when I get angry. So I fight the guy in my cell or the cell next to my cell because there's no outlet deliberately because they want us to kill each other in there. And now it starts to feel like in here. Where's the outlet when I get angry? I'm already coming in with all of this stuff. But there's no outlet when I'm, I feel oppressed, suppressed and depressed. All at the same time. And I said, I love, I love everybody, so I'm not putting nobody down or putting nobody out. But them black children are dealing with a serious mess and ain't nobody really trying to fix it. You just watching them, right? So it was like a team. There's no, uh, team with, um, horrible players and a losing record, but they got a good coaching staff. No, it started with the coaching staff. You got to get rid of them or fix them before you get to the players. So the children are like the players, but then you got the school staff and the parents. If they're a mess, the players a mess, the children are a mess. We just like animals. I know when you in fear of me, when you dislike me or when you hate me, I can smell it on you when I come in here. And you think we fit in the vibe and get along? I look you dead in your eye, you think 'cause I'm 16 or 13 that I don't know that you do not like me? And you here to get the check because you got mortgage and car note and everything and you just really don't care, man? But you want me to care about what? I don't care how much math and whatever you want to implement. Does this make me valuable out there? This education that you're giving me today? Because this education served for jobs that's been gone yesterday. Because when I go home and I turn on TikTok and Instagram and Facebook and everything else, I'm like, school ain't matching up what was happening in this world. So out of hell with that world, we just going in just to fight. And I guarantee you this, if you beef up security in any kind of way, you gonna cause more problems. Because that don't make me feel safe, that make me feel criminal. Because I can't tell who's who now because they all here for all of us, right? Because that's what happened to my son. The gentleman said, you got angry parents and now you got angry children. I'm not an angry parent, but my son was fitting to be an angry child because what happened to him in here? Because you said you got 100 students out of 3,000 that's bad. Well, why everybody get the hammer down on them then? That's how my son felt. Oh, well, we just got to bring the hammer down on everybody because we got 100 that's just out of control and just, um, repeat offenders. So your son is the first time offender, he gonna get the same treatment as the lifers. So I'm gonna act like the lifers then, now. You just turned the good kid bad, man, with the wrong move because you don't know them. And you don't want to get to know them. This don't even feel like a community. You want the children to act like it's a community when they looking in your eyes, mommy, daddy, principal and everybody, and they know, and look in your eyes and say, this ain't no damn community? You think, it's interesting that almost every black community across America is dealing with the exact same thing. Because when they come in here, they get economically deprived. All the money, soon as black people come in, all the money go away. Everything getting cut. Everything get cut. They don't take the money up, they take it down, take it off the table. What y'all feeding these babies? What y'all putting the fuel inside these, you think they just acting like that for no reason? They eat garbage. What you think you gonna get out of them? Takis and soda and candy and this and that and all this trash. Even, no offense to the cafeteria staff, but the food in there is trash. I can't sit still on that kind of, uh, diet plan. I ain't got ADHD, I got pizza mixed with milk. I'm out of control. You understand? You really care about what you, the fights, that's just the, that's the ending result. That what, what's the cause of that? Like any disease, diabetes, but what caused it? High blood pressure, but what caused it? If we not gonna tackle the thing, I have no problem with Frankenstein. My problem is with the mad scientists because that's who wired him up and made him like that. That's who wired him up. Frankenstein was minding his business in the grave. The mad sci, if you know the story, what'd he do? He went there, dug him up, took him back to the lab, hooked him up and drove him crazy. And when he started to fight people and kill people, we wanted to kill, wait, oh wait, but the mad scientist still alive, he gonna make more of them. We got to deal with the thing for real, for real. If we gonna help, talk to them kids in a language they know. They know it when they come in here. When I come in here, I, it's despairing in here, I just feel like I just want to get out of here. I don't even want to be in here. They just watching the clock. And just like I said, just like in prison, them fights happen because they bored. We got to do something, I'm bored here, man. My mom just slapped this guy head, get some excitement going. Hey, I don't care about the consequences, I wasn't getting nothing out of this anyway. You gonna take me to jail, feel like I'm already in hell, you can't do no more to me. And I don't like wasting time, right? So I don't care if this thing take two years, five years, 10 years or 20 years. Just not waste time. Because we ain't got no more time to waste. Recession's almost over, ladies and gentlemen, it's about to be a wrap. We ain't got no more time to waste. On empty promises and just these little powwows that don't go. Because I grew up watching these things and them same, them neighborhoods stayed the same. And got worse. So if you don't care about these children, then get out of here. Get out of here. Because you can't help us. You can't help us, man. Bring some people in that can really help us and stop giving us the people that's pretending and faking to help us. But all we doing is loading the prisons up, man, every year. Them kids wasn't born like that. Them kids was born pure. They ain't turn that way murderers and, and, and robbers and all. Once they got here, they got taught that stuff, how to be like that. We got to be really serious and really strategic and really careful how we deal with them because they got a lot on their back unlike any other generation. You know, the gentleman talked about his community and how it was so great because it was a community. The police, this is like a standoff between parents, staff and students every day. It's like three gangs and none of us like each other. What you think finna happen? I don't like you, you don't like me, I don't like them. It's a powder keg, we fitting to blow. But some, some got to give, somebody got to give, that's all they waiting for. But them children, oh, they gonna outlash y'all, they gonna send y'all to the grave, so they go. So you better help them because they don't, they ain't gonna mind stomping on you on the way to wherever they going. But you gotta help them for real, man. And take, like I said, take a look at what we got and what could we do different? Take a look at the history, has this really helped? I was a grown man. I was a grown man, man. All I heard about was the devil. Well, I was a grown man before I knew the blessings and the love of God. I was 30 plus years old before somebody actually handed me some textbooks that actually helped my black life. And none of them books was in school. And that made me angry, like why didn't they give me this in ninth grade? Why didn't I know who Dr. Claude Anderson was until I was 35? Or Amos Wilson until I was 35? No offense, but I knew Christopher Columbus and all these people that ain't done nothing for me. You not making me worth nothing out there, man. On accident or on purpose, I don't care which one. But it ain't working, man. Respectfully, with love, my name is Sean. I live in this community, I live in Fullcroft. No, I actually own a vegan restaurant called Go Vegan Philly in Wilmington, Delaware. So I cook plant-based soul food. Yes, thank you. So that's what I'm all about, is trying to fix my people from the end. So I cook plant-based soul food, yes, thank you, so that's what I'm all about, is trying to fix my people from the inside. And then we gonna let the sun shine on the outside, but we gotta go deep diving inside. All this little Band-Aid stuff, it ain't gonna work. And, and you gotta be able to admit to yourself, is my way a little old? This might be old. Something new happening right now. And you better dig into it or get out the way or get rolled over, they do not care. Turn the news every day, you see it, do it like they care? Cause they know nobody around care either. So you better get it together, man, cause we know, we know who you are. We know how you feel about me. When I wake up, it's the same old, just like in prison, again, it's the same old day every day. What's different about this place than any other school? Where black children are failing and not, not doing good, what's different? You gotta do something, man. All these grassroots organizations, you better call them in, Black Panthers or somebody, you better bring them in here. If you don't know what to do, stop acting like you know what to do. Stop acting like, just keep it real, we respect that. I don't know what to do, but I'm gonna make a phone call. Kids know you ain't got the answers, they know you out of order and all and disarray, hey, they know, they feel it. You don't think they know when the bills can't be paid, when mom a little nervous about this month? Dad a little nervous? Oh, yeah. So if you out of order, why ain't they gonna be out of order? You make the community safe, stop asking, you do it. You don't use the children to go get freedom, you go get freedom, then you come back and gift that to them. You go outside and clean it up and then you give me to clean them, yeah, that's how we get them. So I love y'all respectfully. My name's Sean, y'all can call me anytime, any day, I'm gonna be here. I'm gonna be here. Talk to them and deal with them and give them the real. Cause my, my spiel to the youth is, don't pretend to be what you don't intend to be. Alright, cause if you make the mistake and you use that gun and you kill some, in jail, you gonna have to be at every, you gonna be a killer every day. Cause out here, you could pretend for Monday and then Tuesday, try to go to school and go to math class, nah, nah, Jack. Don't pretend to be what you don't intend to be. Don't pretend to be a teacher, you don't intend to be a teacher. Don't pretend to be a principal if you don't intend to be one. Love ya.
Um, before I make any, before I make my remarks, um, the board has asked me to, um, have a list of people that want to be a part of the parent task force. The three names of people that already said they were interested in helping while they were at the mic, including, um, Sean that just took a seat. Um, I have already put their names on the list, but if it's other people that didn't get a chance to express that, if you would just come up, you can write your name and number on the list.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to make this as brief as possible.
Mr. Monroe, what's that, I, I said that, um,
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yeah, I wasn't done. But I like what, uh, what the gentleman said, Sean, you know, uh, board, we have to make a move. We have to make a move. I know everything takes time, but the time is now. Look at the news with these kids are killing one another. It's time for us to get together and have an executive session as soon as possible. I, like I said, I know everything takes time, but the time is now. The time is now. We gotta think of these kids as our kids. Okay? So if we're serious about this, we gotta get back to this table and figure out how we gonna work this out. And I know everything don't work in one day, but we gotta start someday. We took an oath to get these kids together, you hear the teachers, you hear the parents, you hear everybody in here complaining about what they need. So let's start now. Figure out one day we could have an executive session so we can help our community out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodford. So I wanna thank, uh, the board, 'cause I didn't know I was gonna be Mike, the mistress of ceremonies. Last week, I had a day off. I am an educator. Eighteen years. Southwest Philly was my home for seventeen and a half years. I'm a cry because we just buried one of my students. And the day before we buried him, his classmate got locked up. Because he's the one that made us have to bury him. And I said to myself, this is crazy. I lived this life every day as a teacher. So to my educators, we are burnt out. It feels like June. Feels like June. When I go to students' funerals, I'm, I'm, for, over violence, over a fight that happened in May of twenty twenty-two, and you take his life in September. In front of the school. In front of the poppy store where we go, where I meet y'all for breakfast. And if you didn't have breakfast, I'll pay for your breakfast. Fifty feet from the front door. I said, I, 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 I can't no more. I said, my next day off, I'm gonna go visit some schools. I visited three schools last Thursday. First school I visited, I went in there, saw an old friend, sat in a class for about, what, forty-five minutes or hour? Talking to the students. On their level. And when they got disrespectful, hey, you pushing the envelope. We can't have a candid conversation, but it has to be respectful. I don't have a problem with students expressing themselves, but it's a way to do it. You might slip up once, twice, but a third time you will not. I sat there with them. They told me what they liked, they told me what they didn't like. Before I left that class, I was the guidance counselor. I walked them through the process, twelfth graders, how to apply to FASFA. What they needed to do in order to apply to a college or university. How to go to trade school. And I'm saying to myself, I don't even work here. But if you are real educated, like the young man over there said, if you really for the kids, it don't matter what building you in. It don't matter what street corner you on. It don't even matter who child it is. Cause I didn't even know I was talking to my little cousin in there. Before I left, I said, here go my personal cellphone number. If you got a problem, you don't understand, your parents need help with the forms, call my phone. Then they say to me, why am I learning ninth grade skills? I'm in twelfth grade. And unbeknownst to me, I was like, pardon, pardon, pardon me? If you in ninth grade, you should be doing ninth grade content. But I'm in twelve and I'm doing algebra. And I'm saying to myself, wait, I did algebra in what, seventh, eighth grade? So there's no continuity, like the young lady said. Then I went to another school. And like the gentleman said, I walked through the door, it was like hell. I came in for a meeting for my child. I walked into a crowd. Not only did I walk into a crowd, I walked into children doing what they want, when they want it, how they want it. So I said, let me just, just start roaming. Cause when I come in buildings, I don't come dressed up. I'm coming like one of the kids. I got my Yeezy slides on. I got me a hoodie on. Where y'all belong? Oh, in this class. Y'all need to get there. Do you gotta pass? No, we coming from the bathroom. No, you was just sitting there talking to a girl holding her hand. Sir, I'm very observant. Somebody says, are you cooking noodles and noodles? I said, is this class or is this, are you making kids food? You're wasting their time, like the gentleman just said. Because one thing kids know, if I know I can get over on you, I'm getting over on you. I said, let me walk a little bit more. Same kids in the hallway. Just doing what they wanna do, when they wanna do it, how they wanna do it. I said, okay, let me go to, let me go somewhere else. I might've stayed in that place forty-five minutes. And I'm like, there's no way in the world that nobody sees this. Either you see and you turn a blind eye, 'cause you don't wanna be bothered, bothered with the situation, you don't wanna be bothered with the kids, or you just burnt out. Keyword burnt out. I said, I got to leave. I had to leave. Because I was about to have to tell somebody something. But before I left, I talked to some administrators, said, hey, I need you to do me a favor. I need to make sure that, you know, things going on both sides of this fence right now. So then I go over to another school. I end up teaching. Walk into a class, they teaching math, hey, that's my thing. I taught them a new skill, new strategy. Can you come back? I said, on my day off, I come back. Just so happy that a student had got sick. So while the teacher's trying to get all these kids together, get the student out, they cleaning up vomit. She said, you came right in time. I said, do you mind? She said, no. I stayed till she finished. Because that's what educators do for one another. Even if we don't like you. Even if we don't like you, we gonna come support you. Because the kids know who you don't like. And they gonna tell you in your class, that's why I miss such and such, don't like you anyway, and neither do I. I left that class. I said, I promise I'll come back my next day off. I go to another class, young man sitting there by himself. Said, what you doing in here by yourself? I'm bad. I said, no, 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 you're not bad. I said, tell me what happened. And he tells me, the teacher told me to stop talking, I kept talking. He told me to stop talking, I kept talking, he kept talking, I said, I said, oh, you made a poor choice to difference in your verbiage to children. Cause they already know, everybody thinks they're bad. So they already got that ingrained in their mind. No, I said, next time you think about this, you said, you made a poor choice. Today I made a poor choice, tomorrow, I'm gonna try to do better. I sat there and did multiplication facts with them. Showed them another trick. I said, oh, yeah, my aunt tried to show me that. I said, can you show it back to me? Stay there, I said, before I leave, I'm gonna come back, we gonna talk again. Pen drops in the hallway, kids respectful of their teachers. One thing I learned over eighteen years, if you have no rapport, no rapport. Like the gentleman said, they already know. So if you're not building no rapport with your students, you just here teaching, that's why your classroom looks like the way it does. That's why they ask you the things they, they already know is inappropriate to ask you for, to do. That's why they ask you. Cause they know they gonna get away with it. It's important for community. That's why I call my friend over there, Mr. Mink. Because there does need to be some mentorship. There does need to be some volunteer. And as everybody in this room, without communication, don't nobody know what's going on. So a lot of things I know that was going on in, in this Southeast Delco. But I don't work here. I'm gonna bring it to the board's attention. Now, the board, the board chooses not to do that, nothing with it, there's nothing I can do about that. Half the information I get is from the district. Now, this is what the district said. Board members, they would like to bring back administration, meaning principals and assistant principals being able to talk freely, free and open. Free and open without any retaliation. Also, a teacher told me, y'all don't ever come talk to the teachers. I said, well, what, what do you recommend? Because I can give you all the suggestions in the world, but I'd rather hear what you wanna do. I think teachers want the same type of things you give to the principals. Free, open dialogue. Without what? Repercussions. Parents, cause I'm a parent of a child that goes to Cappy Park, and my son, he don't tell me nothing. And I'd be like, did you hear this? He'd be like, ah, 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 yeah, I did, that's not funny. It's inappropriate. Because if somebody called me about you doing something like that, National Guard would be out in that hallway. Cause I'm beating him to the white meat. One camera in front of police officers. And any teacher in here who ha- has my son or had my son, any administrator knows this, because my son tells them, my mom is not to be played with. So you can come in these hallways that you might think is streets, and I'm gonna show you what all the streets is all about in front of everybody. Because what you don't do at my house, you ain't fitting to do nowhere else. So three key things I heard during my tours. Free, open dialogue without repercussions. See, parents can come in here, they can say whatever they wanna say, they, they can't get no repercussions. But I need educators, all the training we done took, all the tests we gotta take, all the mandated reporting we gotta do. You should already know you can't be retaliated against. It's a law. So if you choose to sit there in misery and choose to be disrespected, if you choose to be talked to any old kinda way, you chose to accept it. So from Sh- Sheree Monroe Whitsett, if I don't come in the buildings, or if somebody's not calling my phone or sending me a text, I don't know about it. If you got a suggestion, you just wanna have a conversation. I don't know how many parents I done read their IEPs for them and told them what they need to do and what they need to say, and this is where you get the information from. Cause I'm a resource. Not just from mine, but for anybody's. So I'm gonna say this again, like I always tell it. My email address is S is in Sam, M is in Mary, Cause I know some of y'all don't wanna email from your Sudelco. So my way to make you feel free, open, and with no retaliation, is to have a separate email outside of my Sudelco one. So that you can voice your concerns without me ever giving your name. without me ever giving your name, because if anybody in here knows me, I don't give up names. Because one, I don't work in the district, and I'm mandated by the oath of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I will relay your message. And they gonna say, well, who's that person? Well, what's the person? Who's that, what's the name? Who's the name? No, just know that this is how people feel. And if you don't want me to put you on this mic, because one thing for certain, two things for sure, I'mma say something. Never been a follower, always been a leader. You might not like my delivery, you might say, oh, she's mean, she's nasty. That's because I've been told you too many times. And I don't keep talking to adults. Because one thing, if you was an adult, I'm not gonna keep repeating myself. I gotta do that all day for eight hours to children. What did you just say? Take your book out. You want me to take my workbook out? No, I want you to take your book out. You want me to take my pencil out? No, I want you to take your book. Book out. What you want me to do? I'm not finna do that for no adult. I said what I said, and I always got a receipt. One thing you learn, if you're a special ed teacher, if it ain't in writing, it don't exist. So you can tell me anything you wanna tell me, but if it ain't in writing, it don't exist. And my Gmail's my personal, and it can't be sanctioned. Now, if somebody wants to take us to court, it can be, but other than that, your identity is safe with me. So once again, my email is S is in Sam, M is in Mary, schoolboardmember@gmail.com. And usually, the administrators will tell you. I came straight to them, hey, some of your staff feels like this. I'm not telling you who it is, but you should already know. I'm just letting you know they tired. We're tired, the community's tired. So again, I thank everybody for coming out. I wanna thank those individuals like the volunteer because again, volunteer is free. And you never know what kind of time a volunteer can give you. A volunteer might be a certified teacher who's willing to teach for free a class or two. Because there's a lot of retrocheeses out there that are retired, and they ain't doing nothing. They wanna be back in the classroom. They want that interaction. Because if you're a true teacher, that's what you do, no matter what. So I hope this conversation can continue, and next time it's not a special meeting. For me, this was an urgent matter. When your students are killed by their own classmates, it becomes paramount. And I've been talking about this since I've been on the board, and I'm just tired. Tired as an educator. I'm tired as a parent, and I'm tired as a school board member. Because I'm tired of just having meetings for a meeting, for another meeting, to get no results. I'm tired. But I'm still gonna keep the good fight. Because the kids, they might not have an advocate at home, you might have to be that advocate. And so that's why I sit on the school board. I sit on many boards. Just like I told the kids at the other building, you wanna go to trade school? Let me go to my other board, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, and see what they got for you. Because what, I'm a resource. That's what you should be for students. So once again, I'm not gonna keep this long. There are a lot of pressing issues that the board has to deal with, and I'm like, Ms. Woodfall, wait in a week? Wait in years?
Time is now.
Time is now. And if you have a service, you have a skill that you can share, then you need to share it from the top to the bottom. You need to share it. Period. Because those state tests come around, how they gonna do them? How they gonna pass them? When you don't have no teachers. So board members, we all busy. At board meetings, I was on a screen. You wanna know why? Because I was in grad class. My professor, oh, I got a meeting I have to attend. He said, okay. While I'm in a meeting, I'm still answering questions because I'm invested. So if you're not invested, this ain't the place for you. Board members, I hope you heard the community. Because I know y'all tired of hearing from me. Because who am I? So again, sir, I sent the email, sir, I sent the email on Thursday last week. What's this day? The following week. That part. That part. And that's exactly what they did. That part. And that's what I did at the school. There's a lot of disturbing things I heard from these students. There's no way in the world, because if I was their parent, I'd be getting arrested because you and I would have to meet somewhere. And I'm meeting you dead in your classroom. I'm meeting you dead in your classroom. I met my coworker in her classroom when she was talking reckless to the students. They my kids. They mine. When I talk to parents, they's my babies. They get in trouble in school, that's on me. They mine. So when I hear students telling me teachers is calling them the N-word, I got a problem with it. And the only reason I didn't go down there to the classroom and check that person is because my students said they had no counselor, so they didn't know how to apply for college. So I stayed in the classroom with them. And I let them know, don't worry about it, I got you. I'll see you at the next board meeting. They said, we coming. I said, no, don't say you coming. Be there. Because whatever you say in front of me, you better say in front of them. And if somebody says something to you, you got my personal number, and they gotta deal with me now. Because it's like I told the school board, we don't gotta have this meeting. When the cameras rolling, I'mma be all up on it. I don't work at Southeast Delco. I chose to be on the school board. I was asked to be on the school board, then I said, I'mma go again. Then I said, I'mma go another year, another term. But I can't sit on a board where there's no urgency like the same urgency I have for the children. It's for the children, not for adults.
But the urgency is for us to have an executive session.
Ms. Woodfall, you already know how I am. If I have to be on Zoom in a class, in my graduate class, I'm there. So once again, I cannot be a part of a board who's not urgent about students, who's not urgent about keeping staff, who's not urgent about trying to make solutions, bringing parents, bringing the task force. So I tasked the board that we move expeditiously for a parent task force. I move expeditiously for a parent task force. See, I'll throw a motion out there real quick. Robert Wilson Olney says that's what you do. So there's a motion on the floor at the present time, it has been seconded.
There is a list here for those who wanna be on that task force, and I will make a motion now as far as the board is concerned to make it expedient. You know, this is it, then we'll reach out to you, and we'll take it from there. Do I have a second on her motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Who would like?
Motion passed.
Who's gonna head the task force on the board? You know, I'm not asking who. I will, like, we can discuss it, but moving forward, my email, if you would like to be on the task force, and you don't wanna come up here and write it, send me an email. One thing about me, I'mma step up to the plate. I'm not gonna wait for somebody to go grab it. I'mma already have it. Thank you.
Before we go any further, Solicitor Mr. DiOrio has something to say.
Yes, just very briefly, board members, just, I understand fully and completely the urgency of the matter presented before the board, and the board wishes to move forward as quickly as possible. I would hate to have you schedule an executive session and then have it be limited in the conversation because from what I heard here tonight, some of the matters presented would lend themselves to an executive session which would be outside the sunshine privately, such as personnel matters. But I also heard some other concerns that would not involve executive session matters that would be matters that have to be discussed in the sunshine. So perhaps a combination of a special meeting and an executive session would be most expeditious. What I want to try to avoid is if we schedule an executive session, and then we can only discuss certain distinct, for example, personnel matters, which can be discussed in an executive session, and then the board members are frustrated because they can't discuss other matters that have to be discussed in the public. So perhaps a combination of an executive session and a special meeting would be most productive to deal with the issues we've heard here this evening. I just wanted to make those recommendations to the board. Thank you.
President?
Thank you, Ms. Whitsett. I'm gonna announce the future meetings for the board. Committee of the whole meeting is Thursday, October 20, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. And the board meeting is Thursday, October the 27th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. So now you know that there's a meeting gonna be on October the 20th, and there's gonna be another meeting on the 27th. It's open to the community to come to both of those meetings. At this point, I'm gonna ask, do I have a motion for the meeting to be adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening.